Falmouth Community Television's Coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors. Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. 508-548-0911. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate. A family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheimer-Nicherson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance. Offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design, 508-540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly-added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase. A local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry. Serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations. Simply Hearing, Audiology and Hearing Aid Center. 508-548-8123. SimplyHearing.net. Grossi Septic Solutions. J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road. The Annie Hart Cool Team. Dalpe Excavation Incorporated. Info@dalpeexcavation.com. Village Lamp and Repair Shop. Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum. FriendsOfNobbska.org. People for Cats. 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org. Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole. The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. Partners Technology. Voice and Data Solutions. 781-930-5000. Wacoit Congregational Church. Soares Flower Garden Nursery. M. Duffney Builders. Danny's Barber Shop. David Rogers Electric. Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990. Chapman Funerals and Cremations. Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth. Mahoney's Garden Center. The Cape Cod Five. And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More. Additional support provided by... Stop &amp; Shop. Windfall.
Make sure you've checked in and have your electronic voting device. Couple of announcements before we start tonight. Just want to remind all guests and town meeting members that during the break or after the meeting, we don't want anyone behind the stage. That's the control booth for FCTV to do our live broadcast of Town Meeting. So I know sometimes folks used to go hang out behind the stage either during the break or at the end. We ask that you refrain from doing that this evening. Also, just a little flashback to when I was in high school. Isn't Falmouth nice? The Chamber has brought back the old slogan, and these are available through the Falmouth Chamber if you so choose to stop by and pick one up and remind our guests and citizens that isn't Falmouth nice. So thank you, Mike, for that. Okay, at this time, would all... Clear up the side? Would all town meeting members present please press 1A for the establishment of a quorum? All town meeting members present, press 1A for the establishment of the quorum. Our microphone carriers this evening will be Adele Francis and Ed Pride. For those in the balcony, when I recognize you, you'll just come to the stationary microphone in the center of the front of the balcony. Remind all town meeting members to identify yourself each time you speak by name and precinct for the record. Mr. Dufrain, Mr. Netto, and Ms. Cheryl Cousins Long never had that problem. For those of you that followed us going to electronic voting devices, I allowed the committee to make that decision. Gentlemen, am I going to need to have tellers for this meeting? Mr. Dufrain, would you be the teller in the 2nd Division for the quorum count? Mr. Netto, would you be the teller in the 1st Division for the quorum count? Is Ms. Cuny here tonight? Would you be the teller in the 3rd Division for the quorum count? Thank you. Would all town meeting members present please rise for the establishment of a quorum, and the tellers will return to count. In the 1st Division?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. In the 3rd Division?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Sixty-nine in the 2nd Division. With a counted vote of 173 members, we have a quorum, and I call this town meeting to session. All, please rise for the presentation of the colors by Girl Scout Service Unit 359. If you have cell phones with you, please put them on silent or shut them off. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'll recognize Mike Casparian for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, may our meeting this evening be not only an exercise of care and concern for our community and its residents, but also an example of how a community can agree and disagree and still be a community. We ask you to watch over and protect our families, our community, our nation, and our world. May your gift of peace become a reality for all. Amen.
At this point, we'll have a moment of silence for members that have passed since our last meeting. Two that I call to mind are, right after the November Town Meeting, John Owles of T-Ticket passed away, and just most recently, Kevin Lynch, who was also a member of our capable advisory committee. And one of my fond memories of Kevin is when I became a member of the Civil Air Patrol. He actually took me on a flight out of Otis to go over and see my district. So for those members that have passed, let us have a moment of silence. Colors, post. Ladies and gentlemen, the Girl Scouts of Girl Scout Service Unit 359. At this time, I'd like to start with the dispensing of the reading of the warrant, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant except for the officer's return.
Okay, you've all heard the main motion, dispense with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, we'll dispense with the reading of the warrant. At this time, I'll read the officer's return of the warrant. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and some of the inhabitants of the town of Falmouth qualify to vote on town affairs as said warrant directs by posting an attested copy thereof in Town Hall and in every precinct in the town, signed by Constable Ron Braga. Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official part of the record for this meeting. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for town employees who are not residents of the town to speak on any issue before the town meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. At this time, I'd recognize the Planning Board for a notification of public hearing. No notifications for a public hearing? It's on my standard checklist, sorry. Okay. Tonight will be the last town meeting of someone who has been with me through this all of my 23 years as town moderator. I hear that individual might be running for a town meeting member to come back in a new capacity. But from the day that I got sworn in, which was right here on the floor, some of you were here that night, in the first motion that I took a vote on, I was challenged by a member. I won't mention who it is, but many of you know who it is. I don't see him here tonight, but I hope he's okay. And he was challenging me again and again and again, and so I had to look to my left and say, "Mr. Duffy?" And Mr. Duffy said, "Mr. Latimer, Mr. Vier is correct." He can do a voice vote, but if he has to count it, then you have to stand. Ladies and gentlemen, our town council, who served decade after decade and as long as I've been in this chair, Frank Duffy. Frank, thank you for your service to our town, and thank you for your mentorship to the young kid who became moderator so long ago. Now, there's no campaigning allowed at town meeting, but if you live in Precinct 1, you ought to vote for Mr. Duffy.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, thank you for those remarks. I really appreciate them. One of the things that has kept me up here so long is because so many of the people who live in Falmouth and are residents of Falmouth and who work on the boards and the committees and participate in government, and in particularly the members of this town meeting, are such nice people. meeting, are such nice people, and they work very hard, and they have the best interests of the town at heart, and they always come prepared and ready to go. This is a wonderful place, and I'm very pleased to have been part of it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to begin tonight with a blanket vote. On the blanket vote, I'll go through each of the articles on the warrant, briefly call your attention to the recommendations. If you'd like to debate the article, or you would like to make a change to something that's in there, then just stand up and yell "Hold," and we'll hold it. After I go through the warrant once with a description, I'll go through it a second time just by number, and then I will receive a motion from the Chair of the Finance Committee to accept all the articles that are not held as recommended as the official action of this town meeting. So Article 1 is to two town officers, that is a hold. Article 2 is to hear reports, that will be a hold. Article 3 is to fix the salaries of elected officials? Hold. Article 4 is to amend the position classification plan of the zoning administrator. Article 5 will be a hold, that will be the omnibus budget. Article 6, this is to raise and appropriate $360,306 for funding the International Association of Firefighters Local 1397 contract? Hold. Article 7, this is to raise and appropriate $400,000 for wage settlements of town employees. Article 8, this is to raise and appropriate $1,032,79 and transfer it into the capital improvement stabilization fund. Article 9, to raise and appropriate $500,000 and transfer it into the other post-employment benefits trust fund. Article 10, there's a scribbler's error in the number listing. Ms. Petit?
Yes, it should be, instead of 994, it should be 914 in the remaining. The first account is correct, the rest are 914.
Okay, so on the transfer line items, the first one says 01-914-5177, and all of the remaining should say 914 as the second column of digits. Is a hold? Okay. Article 11, this is to appropriate a sum of money to supplement the budget, the recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article 12, this is to authorize the continued use of revolving funds in the chart. Article 13? Hold, this is the fire station. Article 14, this is to authorize the sum of $24 million for the wastewater treatment facility and to authorize the respective borrowing. Article 15, this is to transfer the sum of $95,000 from Certified Free Cash for funding the evaluation of options to discharge treated wastewater by an ocean outfall. Article 16, this is to vote to transfer the sum of $585,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purposes of funding improvements to the Edward Marx Building to create offices for the Human Services Department. Article 17, this is to amend Chapter 21, Article 3, Board of Health of the Code of Falmouth by adding a section on recycling of waste materials. Hold. Article 18, the recommendation is indefinite postponement for eminent domain on Village Common Drive. Article 19, the recommendation is indefinite postponement for eminent domain on Village Common Drive. Article 20, the recommendation is indefinite postponement on eminent domain for land abutting St. Marx Road. Article 21, the recommendation is indefinite postponement on permanent easements for sewer. Article 22, this is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant certain easements to N-Star Electric doing business as EverSource Energy. Article 23, the recommendation is indefinite postponement to appropriate a sum of money for the remediation of erosion at the Punch Bowl. Hold. I asked folks to please shut their phones off before we start the meeting. Article 24? Hold. This is bylaw for leaf blowers, the recommendation was indefinite postponement. Article 25 will require a secret ballot, so it will be a hold. Article 26 needs a main motion because there's no date there, so that's automatic hold. Article 27 will be a hold because it's contingent on the previous two articles. Article 28, to vote to create a new full-time position of Sustainability Director. Hold. Article 29, the recommendation is indefinite postponement to designate unappropriated 25% of local meal and restaurant tax for affordable housing. Article 30, this begins Community Preservation Committee articles, this is to appropriate the sum of $119,000 from fiscal 2023 estimated revenues to rehabilitate exterior building features of the Edward Marx Building. Article 31 is to vote to appropriate the sum of $248,136 from fiscal 2023 estimated revenues to the Falmouth Economic Development Industrial Corporation to rehabilitate exterior masonry at the Falmouth Station on Depot Ave. Article 32 is to appropriate the sum of $65,000 from budgeted reserves to develop a historic structure report for the Woods Hole Historical Museum. Article 33 will have a new main motion, so that is a hold. Article 34 is to vote to appropriate or transfer the sum of $1,860,000 from fiscal year 2023 estimated revenues to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Article 35 is to vote to appropriate the sum of $95,628 from budgeted reserve to the Falmouth Water Stewards. Article 36 is to vote to appropriate the sum of $1,400,000, of which $400,000 is from the undesignedated fund balance, and $1 million is from the fiscal year 2023 Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to rehabilitate the John Neal Baseball Complex located on Gifford Street. Article 37 is to appropriate from fiscal 2023 Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenues the sum of $162,200 to fund Community Preservation Committee Administrative Expenses. Article 38 is to transfer the sum of $122,548 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance to the Historic Preservation Reserve. Okay, Article 1 is a hold. Article 2 is a hold. Article 3 is a hold. Article 4? Article 5 is a hold. Article 6 is a hold. Article 7? Article 8? Article 9? Article 10 is a hold. Article 11? Article 12? Article 13 is a hold. Article 14? Article 15? Article 16? Article 17 is a hold. Article 18? Article 19? Article 20? Article 21? Article 22? Article 23 is a hold. Article 24 is a hold. Article 25 is a hold. Article 26 is a hold. Article 27 is a hold. Article 28 is a hold. Article 29? Article 30? Article 31? Article 32? Article 33 is a hold. Article 34? Article 35? Article 36? Article 37? And Article 38? Mr. Chairman, for the main motion on the blanket.
Mr. Moderator, I move that all articles that have been passed and not held be and hereby are adopted as recommended as the official action of this meeting, and that the necessary monies for the same shall be raised and appropriated or as otherwise specified.
You've all heard the main motion? Do we want to run a slide as a test with this? Okay, we're actually, we're going to queue up a slide with the clickers just to see where we're at. This will be for the blanket vote, to approve as recommended all articles that were not held. That's fine, that's okay. Okay, all those in favor of the blanket vote, it says town offices, but it's the blanket vote, signify by pressing 1A. If you're opposed to the blanket vote, you can press 2B. All those in favor of the blanket, 1A. If you're opposed to the blanket, 2B. Yes? Let me declare this one, and then we'll actually dive into that one. So by a counted vote of 103 in favor and 0 opposed, the blanket vote passes. Mr. Chairman, for notification of reconsideration? Mr. Chairman, for notification of reconsideration?
Mr. Moderator, I hereby serve notice of reconsideration of all articles passed under the blanket vote.
Okay. Could you actually come down here for a moment and have them actually pull the list up and see if you're in there? Somebody said they weren't in 5, who said that? If you could come down too, so we can take a look. All right, let's just start with the first two. Let's just start with the first two. Article 1, yep. Yeah, that's, those folks were, according to the clerk, were added to this, so there is another issue. Yep, Ms. Segal?
Mr. Moderator, there's another problem. I thought I was just getting old, and I can't see my name on there, but this young lady over here has said that she can't, that it looks fuzzy to her also, so I wonder if it's possible for something to be clarified?
Okay.
And there are a couple of other people who have said the same thing. Thank you.
So the projector might be a little out of focus? Okay, so this is what we're going to do as of right now, we're going to proceed with this meeting, we're going to use the tellers, and if all this fancy stuff can get worked out, we'll use it. Otherwise, we're going old school, folks. We're not going to hold up the town meeting over this. Article 1, Mr. Chairman? Actually, Article 1 is to choose town officers. I have the nominations for the Finance Committee. We currently have five members up. One member chose not to seek reappointment, and we have one vacancy carried over from an existing term. So in nomination, I have for reappointment to the Finance Committee Keith Schwegel, Nick Lowell, Eileen Miskel, Ronald Dwyer. The nominations for our two vacancies, Jason Cullenane and Robert Dugan. Chair would entertain a motion to close nominations? So moved. All those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, nominations are closed. All those in favor of the nominations for the Finance Committee signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 2, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote Article 2 as recommended.
Article 2 as recommended, this is to hear reports. The first one I have up is the Beach Committee.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks to all of you here for your attention and to the Beach Committee report. I promise that we will keep it brief. First of all, we'd like to congratulate Maggie Clayton for being our new Beach Superintendent. I know that the committee and I look forward to continuing to work with her at the helm. Secondly, a thank you to the Vice Chair Barbara Schneider for all her work, along with fellow Beach Committee members, for their dedication and passion in advocating for what is best for the Falmouth Beaches and the Beach staff. Lastly, a special thank you to Doug Brown, who must have drawn the short straw and is our rep to our committee. As stated above? As stated above, I don't want to read for you, but after extensive work, we presented in November to town management and to the Select Board various, from various Cape Towns, the different pay scales and incentives for Beach staff, and we want to bring this to your attention as well. We also suggested ways to increase the number of applicants. And over the winter, we do not take off. We work with Maggie to create ways to get information of our lifeguard training programs and other beach positions to communicate that to the public. Presently, you could help us by encouraging your young families at home or grandchildren. We have two wonderful programs that are going to be offered, one through the YMCA in April Vacation, starting April 18th, and also here in Falmouth in June, when school gets out. Lastly, we continue to monitor what other Cape Towns are offering to their applicants, and have expressed our concerns and your concerns to the Select Board and Town Manager about fully staffing our beaches this summer. And as recently as last night on the Channel 5 Evening News, the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation is paying their lifeguards $21 an hour with a $500 incentive to stay the entire summer. With that being said, we'd like to continue our quick presentation, and I'll have, Barbara will continue with that, and thank you for your attention and your continued support of all that is the beaches.
In addition to staffing, we have begun the process of analyzing the condition of our three bathhouses. We were hoping that that investigation of those bathhouses will allow us to give good detailed analysis of them to our staff, and also help us advise on what we think would be great improvements. We also plan to use the assessed value along with the in-depth analysis to make sound recommendations, and you'll see that happening in May and going forward from there. We also have been carefully monitoring each south and west-facing beach, noting damage during storms, and hope to learn more over the next year. We're working also with the Conservation Commission study, that's using the drone study as well. We hope that we can find out actual sand loss, predictions for sea level change at each beach, and how that will require change in beach design and parking. Our goal is to ask the November Town Meeting to help- Our goal is to ask the November town meeting to help us get scientific information necessary to make informed recommendations about how we can or cannot sustain each of our beaches going forward. We worked with the Falmouth Water Stewards to identify locations for water stations at eight beaches to help provide adequate water, both for the guards as well as for the beachgoers, and we just passed that on the blanket vote. So we look forward to helping getting those installed. The committee has worked to enhance relationships with the Commission on Disabilities, Litter-Free Falmouth, the Waterways Committee, and local village associations and homeowners associations. And we've developed these rack cards that you can find all over town. We've given them to all the hotels, and they have pretty comprehensive information about our town beaches. Finally, this is what we have recommended for the fees. This is after a lot of investigation with what was going on around us and the price point that people were covering. As you can see, there's a little bit of increase in fees. That's to hopefully help us fully staff our beaches with a full constituency of lifeguards. And again, I can't say enough how much we would appreciate your help in getting the word out. Remember, if you don't have, if you have a teenager who doesn't have anything going, make sure you tell them about the lifeguard training programs, and even if you start the one in June after school, you can be on the beach lifeguarding in July. So we look forward to working with the town and hope you'll help us. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other committees wanting to make a report?
Rosemary Carey, Energy Committee Report.
Rosemary Carey of the Energy Committee.
Yes, Rosemary Carey, Precinct 5, representing the Energy Committee. And I serve on the committee with Megan Ansler, Chair Alessandro Boconceli, Eleanor Ling, and Matt Patrick. Thank you for the opportunity to give the report from our committee tonight. The role of the Energy Committee is to advise the Select Board on energy-related matters. We're focused on maximizing energy efficiency in our buildings and transportation and onsite renewable energy production to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and help fossil, foster the transition to fossil fuel, off of fossil fuels. These measures will best position our community for greater energy resilience. Another area of focus, well, one area of focus is the green communities. After years of working to meet the five criteria for green communities designation culminating in the select, in the stretch code adoption voted by this town meeting, Falmouth was awarded Green Communities designation in spring 2021 and received our first grant award of $181,000 and $214. Working with town and school officials, we identified 13 energy efficiency projects, including LED lighting, weatherization projects, and boiler upgrades to our schools and municipal buildings. These projects will be funded by the grant. So with the help of this initial grant and future grants, we expect our town and schools to reduce energy usage by 20% in five years. After ensuring that our buildings are as energy efficient as they can be, electrification of our heating and cooling systems and other appliances are the next key step in achieving our net zero goals. At Town Hall, we have solar and heat pump and electric, heat pumps and electric vehicles, a great start to electrifying our operations. The Energy Committee strongly supports the procurement of electric vehicles or hybrid electric vehicles and for our municipal fleet when vehicles need to be replaced. We're also advocates for electrifying the seasonal RTA trolley, AKA the WUSH, which would provide a cleaner, quieter experience for our summer guests, lower maintenance costs, and lead to healthier air quality for all. We've also recently begun to explore the benefits of electric school buses, which can also be part of our energy resilience strategy. Electric school buses emit no external pollution, have cleaner air, they're cheaper to fuel than diesel, cheaper to maintain, they run quietly and handle effectively in cold weather and unwinding roads. It's important that our town understand the costs and benefits and available options and be ready to access generous federal and state incentives when they become available. We're also advocates for a transition to battery-powered marine vessels. Electric ferries are being adopted across the world, and they're feasible when they traverse short distances, that's under 30 miles, and stay for relatively long periods at the same port, no more than 30 minutes. That makes charging convenient. Not only are they emissions-free, but require less maintenance and the engines are quiet, which protect coastal ecosystems. If Falmouth is going to achieve our net zero emissions by 2050, which is mandated by the Next Generation Climate Roadmap Law, we'll need even more Falmouth homes and businesses to make energy efficiency improvements, install solar panels, electrify our appliances and heating and cooling systems. We'll also need to make our next car, truck, and school bus and ferry purchases electric vehicles. The Energy Committee is committed to providing education and outreach on these options, and we have submitted articles to the Falmouth Enterprise. Future outreach will include, let me go back, articles or outreach on green building, heat pumps and heating and cooling, battery storage, and available financial incentives for these things. So we meet the second Wednesday of the month by Zoom now. We welcome the public's input, and that's our email. Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Alan Robinson, and I'm Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. If I figure out which one. Which one? Left? Right? There we are. Thank you. Sorry, everybody. Actually, just two weeks ago, the Select Board approved our updated emission statement. There are three core elements to that statement. The first one's the obvious one, advise the Select Board. The second, research and promote the development and implementation of environmentally, fiscally, and socially sound means and methods for reducing solid waste tonnage. The second is to achieve this through initiatives to increase reuse, improve recycling, encourage food waste separation and composting, and enhance consumer awareness. Right now, we've got our number one objective, and that is really recycling for all, and that would be this evening, the passage of Article 17, Recycling of Waste Materials. It will allow for the development and implementation of mandatory recycling program in accordance with Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection requirements, assign the authority to develop and enforce rules and regulations to the Board of Health, and applies to owners and occupants of all properties, both residential, commercial, and institutional. We respectfully request town meeting approval of this article, and we'll be talking more about this later. The Department of Public Works asked if we could use this time to give you an update related to the article that you all passed in November, and that was for the carts, the system, the standardized carts for recycling in the town of Falmouth. You recall in November, it was Article 13 that was passed. Many of you may have heard that in January, the Town Department of Public Works won a grant from the Recycling Partnership of $321,000 towards the 121.25 million dollars cost of the carts. The $300,000 goes to the carts, $21,000 goes to messaging about the program. It's a really substantial award to the town and a savings to the town. I really applaud the Department of Public Works for pursuing this, finding it and pursuing it. We've already started, or they've already started this spring with planning the rollout. The carts are about to be ordered and beginning, we're beginning public outreach, and that'll be a team effort of the Department of Public Works, the entire administration, and the Solid Waste Advisor Committee. Summer, the carts will be received, distribution of the carts will start. Not everyone's going to, not all 21,000 residences are going to get carts on the same day. There'll be a kind of a rolling rollout, and the education and communications will continue. And as it goes on, they'll be reporting by the town periodically on the progress of the program. There are four elements of the messaging campaign related to the carts. First is use of direct, direct information for each household before the cart distribution. There'll be mailings. Messaging through civic and faith, civic associations like the North Falmouth and the West Falmouth and the other civic associations, faith-based organizations, scout troops and others, FCTV, the Talking Trash Column. We hope you all read our Talking Trash column in the Enterprise every month. Please do. And print and social media. A cart information packet will be delivered with carts during the distribution program, a contamination minimization plan to support the recycled materials quality once cart collection has been implemented. And this is, this is an example of a cart, a mock-up of the card that will be mailed to everyone in the community. The information that will go along with the cart will be a three-piece program. The left is information from the Department of, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The other is information on the cart, and the third is on how to set up and operate your cart. An awareness of the program, I mean, awareness is important, but so much else is more so. Knowledge, engagement, and advocacy, and we hope that all of you will help support and communicate about this program. And we wanted to give you a brief demonstration. I don't know, I'm sure some of you know Mary Jo Bradley, and I'm like, you know, this tall. Mary Jo, I guess, is maybe kind of up to here. There she is, okay. This, by the way, is Mary Jo's neighbor's home, not hers. So we want to thank you. Really, every day within Solid Waste, this town meeting is making a difference. Three years ago, you passed a bylaw for the establishment of a position for Recycling and Solid Waste Coordinator and Manager. I spoke about this a little bit in November. It's absolutely a game changer. It really has changed how the department can approach recycling and waste management. Several years ago, you banned plastic retail bags, a first step in reducing litter on our roadways and beaches and parking lots. Then, three years ago, you banned the expanded polystyrene foam food and drink service ware. And then, just about a year and a half ago, I guess, you banned the sale of NIPs and single-use water bottles. Each of these are making a difference in our town, and so we ask and hope that you'll please continue making that positive difference by voting yes on Article 17, and I'll be talking about that later this evening.
Any further committee reports? If there are another question, we'll come on the motion to accept reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 3, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 3 as printed.
Okay, Article 3, this is the fixed salaries of elected officials. Who held this one? Can we get a microphone in the center, please?
Hi, Megan Hanawalt, Precinct 8. I would like to amend this article to add a fifth category, fifth and sixth categories for salaries for elected officials. I would like to include the school committee members, with each member receiving $5,000, and the chair receiving $6,000. And I know this is allowed per Massachusetts General Laws, Part 1, Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 52.
Okay, Ms. Hanawalt, it is allowed to compensate school committee members, but we have a town meeting form of government, and setting new salaries within the scope of this article exceeds the scope. So we could have an article of the new positions at a town meeting that would set salaries, but to add new positions that are uncompensated to this article would exceed the scope of the article that was posted in the warrant.
It says in the Section 52 that blah, 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 blah. Union may be compensated for services by a majority vote of the city council, a city having a Plan D or E, in a city not having Planner D or E, charter by the city council, in a town, by a majority vote at a town meeting.
And at a town meeting, you need a properly posted warrant article to take action, and adding new positions that are not listed in this article exceed the scope of the article. We can do it here, but it's got to be on an article to be within the scope. You're right, we can vote here by majority, but we need an article that proposes to bring the new positions onboard. So we can do that through the next warrant or any subsequent warrant, but the motion would be out of order as it exceeds the scope of the article. Any further discussion on Article 3? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 5, this is the omnibus budget. Mr. Chairman, for the main motion. Then we will have a budget presentation, and we will go through the budget section by section. If anybody has questions or wants to make an amendment, you just do it right there. Where it's not like the blanket, we don't do a hold. We'll just go section by section, discuss it, make any amendments, and we can do more than two amendments on an omnibus budget. Ms. Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jennifer Mullin, Finance Director.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I was explaining it, and I didn't have the motion yet.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 5 as printed.
As printed, Ms. Mullin.
Thank you. So this is the FY '23 operating budget presentation. So just a little bit of a background, I always like to review a little bit about FY '22. The revenues have been strong. Our new growth this fiscal year was certified at 1.6 million, was, is actually a lot higher than it normally is. We've level-funded state aid because the state budget has not been passed fully yet. The governor did submit his budget, but we're waiting for the House and the Senate and the Ways and Means Committee to weigh in, and usually that will be set around May or June. There is definitely a potential increase of Chapter 70 money. That could be around 1.8, $2 million, and we will have that definitive figure that time. So you might see us come back in November town meeting to appropriate that money for the school department. Chapter 70 is school aid. The free cash increased in FY '21. We had a large increase in free cash. In the pandemic, people weren't spending, but we did have a lot of unspent. Our revenues were stronger than we anticipated with the pandemic. Our revenues were stronger than we anticipated with the pandemic, and we did have some turnbacks in our operating budget. And we weren't the only community. A lot of communities had high free cash in FY '21. Here are our balance and our stabilization funds. Our general stabilization fund is 7.2 million, which is really our savings account. Capital stabilization fund is 5.3 million. Our debt stabilization is 1.5. Our special education is a little over a million, and our other post-employment benefits is a little over 2 million. As you hear me, every year since I've been here, we're looking at the operating budget tonight. That's what we're reviewing. And it's reoccurring revenues fund reoccurring expenses. So what you're looking at tonight are reoccurring revenues to fund our reoccurring expenses. And we have four major revenue sources that fund our operating budget, and that's property taxes, state aid, estimated local receipts, and other available funds. One-time revenues fund one-time expenses, and that's where you'll see free cash in our reserves. You won't see too much of that in this budget, I mean, in this warrant tonight. The Select Board has a revenue policy. Our financial policies are posted on our website. We have four reoccurring revenue sources that I just spoke about. And the property taxes are largest, and that funds 76.7% of the total revenue used to balance the budget. Our increases are limited to Proposition Two and a Half. We can't just increase our property taxes. We can increase them by two and a half percent. Anything over that would either be a debt exclusion or an override vote. And what makes up our estimated local receipts? Our motor vehicle excise, hotel motel and meals. Part of our financial policy is 75% of the meals tax is allocated to the capital stabilization fund. We've been doing that for a number of years. And more recently, you won't see it in this budget, but you'll see it in FY '24, and we're working on incorporating this into the policy, but it has been a vote of the Select Board and partly to a vote of town meeting. At the last town meeting, we have a community impact fee of 3% on short-term rentals. That will be effective July 1st, 2022. Increase in our hotel motel short-term rental taxes from five to six percent. We voted that at the last town meeting, and that's effective July 1st, 2022. And we have a short-term rental revenue allocation as well that the Select Board voted, and that will be approximately $500,000. And you'll see that in our FY '24 budget. We'll see, we'll, we'll look at the revenues that come in in '22. We're always like a year behind, but you'll see that in '24. And we also have some departmental revenue, water and sewer, beach parking, licenses and permits, ambulance revenue, special assessments, which are betterments and investment income. Increase in estimated receipts to pre, we are back at our pre-pandemic levels in our estimated receipts that were in FY '22, and we've increased the estimated receipts in this budget by 1.3 million. And other available funds that separated revenue, parking meter, embarkation funds, wetlands and waterways, energy receipts, golf revenues, community preservation, bond premiums, and debt stabilization. This is all laid out in the, there's a spreadsheet in the back of your warrant book, and this lays everything out. It gives you a whole spreadsheet on how we calculate Proposition Two and a Half. So we have a two and a half percent levy capacity. We have estimated new growth for the FY '23 budget. We're estimating it at 800,000. We have, we've had strong new growth in the last five years, so we've been able to demonstrate that. So we've been able to increase that for FY '23, and the town is maximizing the debt drop-off. And this is just a little bit of a chart that shows you of our reoccurring revenue and how it's allocated. And as you can see, the major source of our revenue is property taxes at 76.7%. We have an appropriation policy. The increases that you see in the budget is consistent with the Select Board's budget policy, and it's also consistent with the strategic plan that the Select Board vote, or meet in July and vote. So our budget increases, we've level funded the health insurance. We did have a 3% increase in health insurance, but we've been able to level fund it because we have a little bit of a buffer in there right now. The retirement assessment is 5.21%. It's been, it's an increase of about a half a million dollars. It includes the override allocation, the override that you approved, I think it was a year ago, April or last April. I get the years mixed up. It seems like it goes by so fast. The school departmental budget is up by 2.79%, an increase of 1.4 million. And the upper K vocational technical is a 2% increase, which is lower than usual at What you'll see in this budget, hopefully you had a chance to read the town manager's budget message, we have three full-time firefighters, two full-time police officers, and one full-time health inspector. We have an increase in our solid waste contract of about 750,000. We're in the process of renewing that contract. We definitely know costs are going up like everything else. We have an AFSCM reclassification in this budget, and we have an adjusted wage schedule for DPW and seasonal employees. And this is how the FY '23 operating budget's allocated, just gives you a visual. So in conclusion, our estimated revenues and new growth are stronger than originally projected. We have, always have fixed cost increases that we have to make sure that we're able to fund. The budget allows for flexibility. We want to be able to do that. And continue, we always look at continuing implementation and further exploration of departmental reorganization and cost-saving measures. That goes on even before and after the budget process.
Okay. We're going to go through the budget section by section. If you have a question or you want to make an amendment, just stand up and be recognized, and we'll hop right into it. So the first one, first section is general government, town meeting. Town moderator. Select Board, town manager. Yep, microphone in the center, please.
Mike Zmuda, Precinct Three. This Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank parking lot. The article that was in newspaper over the summer and the fall indicated the lease was worth $25,000, but it didn't indicate the length of the lease for that lot. Was that a one-year lease, two-year lease, five-year lease?
It's a one-year lease. Yeah, it's the annual cost.
Okay. And the cost of the landscaping, the painting, and the signage for that lot that came out of the DPW budget to do, did we get any in-kind payment, a reduction in that $25,000 to cover that expense?
No, those, those were improvements undertaken at the discretion of the town.
And in the lease, is the town released of any liability if anything should occur in that section of the lot?
Actually, the town has some liability for utilizing that as a municipal lot. I defer to town council to answer any follow-up questions on the exact extent of that.
Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Moderator, in the lease, we assume the responsibility for any damage that we have caused.
If something were to happen to a citizen using that lot after hours, a police investigation, a potential suit to the town, we are liable for that in that lot?
Well, it depends on the circumstances of the accident, sir, but it's possible that we do.
Okay. My next question on the diversity and inclusion officer that the town is responsible for half of, is that included in this '23 budget?
Yes, it is.
There we go, thank you.
Further discussion on Select Board, town manager. Finance Department. Finance Committee Reserve Fund. Town accountant. Town treasurer, collector. Town council. Personnel Department. Mrs. Mudda.
Mike Zmuda, Precinct Three. In that department, there are three full-time equivalent jobs, but the increase in salary is only 759 dollars?
Ms. Mullin.
Yes, there are three, but we did have someone leave one of the positions that was paid at a higher rate, and we brought somebody in at a lower rate. But there's still three time, full-time.
Okay, anything else under Personnel Department? Information Technology? Microphone to my left, please.
Jed Goldstone, Precinct Two. I note in the main budget discussion online that three out, four out of the seven positions are vacant. Are there, and, but there's, are there plans to get those filled?
Ms. Mullin.
Yes, we've recently filled most of the, I don't think we have a vacancy right now. There's one vacant position, but we do have somebody on a consulting basis, but those positions have been filled.
Geographical information systems. Town clerk. Under Community Development, the Conservation Department. Ms. Lichtenstein, the motion that you're going to make, Ms. Lichtenstein, the motion you're going to make, the, the appropriate funding in the omnibus budget there should be to raise and appropriate rather than a transfer from free cash, which would be like a one-time. So if you could just, where it says free cash, I'm recommending you say raise and appropriate.
Leslie Lichtenstein, Precinct Eight. I was asked by Kim Corant to make an amendment to this particular line item, 68 salaries and wages, and to raise the budget amount to what was actually requested, rather than the, request was 349,356 instead of the recommended figure of 317,523. This would allow the Conservation Commission to make their half-time officer full-time. And Kim Corant will read the motion and speak to this, and he's in the balcony.
Ms. Lichtenstein, you need, you need to read the motion. You're the town meeting member.
I don't have it. He has it.
There we go. It's on its way.
Forgive me, I was asked to do this at 5:00 this afternoon. I'm speedy, but only so far. Okay. To increase recommended salary and wages line by $31,833 to 3,049,356, with the funds to be taken from, to.
To raise and appropriate.
Raise and appropriate. This would allow the department to convert a half-time conservation agent position to full-time. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen in the balcony.
Can I get the microphone?
Yep, I can hear you.
Thank you. My name's Jim Callheart. I've lived in Nashville, been with Falmouth for 13 years. I'm in Deep Pond.
You've got to be a little closer to the mic.
I'm beautiful. Head of all ponds. And I'm asking, as Leslie mentioned, for change in the wages and salaries line for Conservation Department. I think we can all agree that the condition of our ponds, estuaries, and bays is not just a matter of style. The health of our waters is an important factor in the health and economic vitality of our town, including our property values, our tourism, and our recreation. As a resident of Deep Pond, I and my neighbors have become increasingly concerned about the condition of our ponds. Every year brings more algae and weeds. Every year, the water becomes cloudy. Every year, we see decline in the number of trout, turtles, fish, and other wildlife. We've had outbreaks this bad, and everything.
Okay, I can hear him. Can you get a little closer to the mic? Some folks are having trouble. I can hear him, so.
If I speak, if I speak like this, can you hear me? My mic's not working.
Who's, who's got, who's got the, the machine that tells us if there's levels reading? Is there somebody on that? Hello? Okay. Here we go. Here we go. So, what I was saying is that, that's too loud, right? What I was saying is that every year, we see deterioration in our pond, Deep Pond. This is the, this is the same, the same story applies across Falmouth. Our ponds are deteriorating, our saltwater ponds, our freshwater ponds, our bays, and our estuaries. The Conservation Department is a critically important ally for all of us who care about our land and water. Unfortunately, it is woefully understaffed and underfunded. Without a reasonable amount of staff, the Conservation Department cannot fulfill its mission of protecting our land and water. For those of you who interact with the Conservation Department, you observe the enormous disconnect between their mandate and their resources. Despite their incredible dedication, they are overwhelmed. I witness regulations related to fertilizer herbicides and property management going unenforced every day. I see property owners who want to make environmentally sensitive changes to their property not being able to speak with anyone in the department about their plans. While there are many other factors, the understaffing of this department is certainly one of the reasons that many of our ponds, estuaries, bays, and, and are deteriorating, some at an alarming rate. I am well aware that many town departments are understaffed. It strikes me, at least partially, as a structural problem in our town's finances. I am also aware that there's a story behind every line item in the budget, and that the budget recommendations are the product of much discussion, negotiation, and difficult decision-making. I know that life is choice, and that budgets are about choice. All that, all that said, on its face, and I encourage you to open your book to pages 44 and 45, and, and look at the columns for requested amount and recommended amount. What you will find is that up to the bike, the biking department, there are 47 line items. Forty-three of those 47, the recommended amount is the same as the requested amount. There's four of those, four of those 47 where the requested amount does not equal the recommended amount. For two of those, DPW Wastewater Division and Human Services, they requested amount is, they're being funded at 97, 99.7% of their request. The Police Department is being funded at 95.5% of their request. The Conservation Department is being funded at 91.4% of their request. So they're finishing 47 out of 47 departments in this budget when you look at. Okay, the gentleman's, the gentleman's time has expired. Okay. Ms. Mullin.
Thank you. I just wanted to give some insight into the, the process that we go through when we make recommendations to the Select Board, and then subsequently to the Finance Committee. The request from the Conservation Department was to take a full, a part-time person and make them full-time to, to retain this person, this unbenefited, unbenefited position to a benefited position. So it's not just the increase in salary, it's an increase in health insurance, an increase in retirement assessment. We look at the Board of Selectment Strategic Plan, and they were clear about public safety being a priority in the Health Department. I do want to, I've spoken with Jen Lincoln about this. This is something we are going to look at in FY '24. I did speak with her. If she needed some temporary help, we could always help give her some temporary help instead of making it a full-time position right now. If this was a full-time position, it wouldn't be going to cleaning up the ponds, it would be to enforcement and be made part of the department, but we are looking at this for FY '24. The other, what else I wanted to mention too is, before we start the budget process, I do have department heads come in to me at times and ask if, would this be a good year for me to put in a position? And we do try to prioritize. So there were a couple departments that had come to me, and I asked them to wait until FY '24. So you don't see that in the, in their requested budget, because I asked them to hold off. Jen felt strongly, she put that in there, but we did have a discussion about. Jen felt strongly, um, she put that in there, but we did have a discussion about that. We had another discussion about that today, and she's on board with our plan. Um, but I wanted to just give town meetings some insight, because when we add positions to the budget, it's forever and a day, and it's costly, and we just have to implement them. We can't do everything at once. We do have to do it piecemeal, um, and it, and there is a lot, um, you know, a lot that does go into it. Thank you.
Okay, for the discussion on the amendment. Mr. Hargraves? Microphone to my left.
Thank you. Uh, I'm on the Finance Committee, Peter Hargraves. There is a principle here about how do we do planning and prioritizing, and I think that, uh, Ms. Mullin has explained that well. What I stood up to do is to correct the mischaracterization that, uh, we don't have a concern about water quality and conservation, and that our actions aren't consistent with the need. Because in the meeting that the Finance Committee had before this meeting, we voted a $6,600 transfer, and Deep Pond was included in this for the APCC to study and continue to study cyanobacteria levels. And this is kind of an evolving problem and concern. The town doesn't have resources to do it, but the town has allocated resources that are transferred where they weren't, from where they weren't needed to this conservation need in order to immediately address it for this season. So, um, I guess if Jen Lincoln were here, I would like to hear her say whether, uh, changing this number would actually advance the cause that was so eloquently stated in the, in the, by the petitioner's request. But I don't see how that would advance some of the, uh, problems that have been stated around, uh, the conservation issues as perceived by Kim. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that we were addressing as aggressively as possible the quality of water.
Okay, we have Ms. Lincoln with us today.
Hello, can you hear me? Jen Lincoln with the, um, Conservation Department, Conservation Administrator. Like all departments, we are very busy. The added staff would not be dedicated specifically to look at the problem of the freshwater ponds, but would be incorporated into the department, um, and their role would be enforcement, project review, just like the other agent we have. I hope that answered your question.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment. Hearing on the question will come on the amendment to increase the line item to $349,356. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? I haven't had a chance to chat with the IT folks. Let's do a voice vote again. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? It's a pin of the chairs that the noes have it by a majority. What, what's the status of the review of the names? So... Can, can we, are you able to actually pull up just the precinct listing of names? No, no, can you just put, like, if I say precinct one, can you just put precinct one slide up there and leave it there? Is that something that can be done? Cause there were a number of other individuals that I asked to sit down that said that they couldn't find their names. So, I wanna, if I can go with a slide up there and make sure everyone's name is on the slide. No, 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 hold on, hold on. They're, they're just going into the software. We're trying to get the slide that, that- Yeah, and there's no way to pause that as it's rotating? Mr. Peck?
Mr. Moder, Mr. Moderator. Can I just ask if they could do the other scale of this slide, like you were asking? But can we try to focus it a little bit?
Yeah, I'm told that that's the great-
Cause I have never had a problem prior to tonight.
These machines are getting old. We've had these since we started using them, and so-
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm a year older too, so. Uh, every, everything being equal, uh, I can't focus mine any better than what we're doing right now, but, uh, this, these numbers and names right now are-
Yeah, no, I, I, we, we hear ya, and, and, and they told me that they can't get it in any more focus than, than what they had, based on what we have, so-
All right.
So, so we're gonna need to buy some new projectors, uh, so, folks-
It just didn't seem clear.
I, I, I just wanted to make sure that folks on the stage hear me. We need to buy new projectors. So I expect, I expect I'll see that in the capital plan in the fall. Okay? Can you actually run, without anybody voting, can you run that and, and give, give it such a long period of time that each slide's gonna stay up for, like, 10 to 15 seconds? I have no confidence that you have every one of my members in that machine right now, and we will not use the machine. So if we cannot give me 100% confidence, then we're just gonna have you do the PowerPoint presentations. So you cannot give me a slide by precinct to confirm that everyone in this room is in this machine. Okay, then we're not using the machine tonight. So we're gonna go back to this one. All those in favor of the amendment to increase the Conservation Department signify by standing, and the tellers will return the count. Mr. Dufresne, are you comfortable continuing tonight as a teller, or do you, do you want me to appoint someone? You are? Okay. All those in favor of this amendment to increase that line item signify by standing, and the tellers will return a count. In the first division? Twenty-one. In the third division? Twenty-eight. In this, thirty-four, in the second division. All those opposed signify by standing, and the tellers will return a count. In the first division? Twenty-eight. In the third division?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. In the second division, thirty-nine. By a counted vote of 83 in favor and 100 opposed, the decision of the chair, the call of the chair stands, and the amendment fails. Anything else on the Conservation Department? Mr. Hargraves?
I'm sorry, this is to cement your opinion on the slides, because my wife texted me and said that her name was on precinct nine. She saw it on TV, and she hasn't been a town meeting member for two years, so.
Yep, that's why we have paper ballots for the municipal light compact. Anything else on Conservation Department? Planning Department? Zoning Appeals? Building Department? Health Department? Under Public Safety, Police Department? Yep. Microphone in the back, please.
Thank you. Carol Murphy, Precinct Nine. Under the salaries and wages, there is a $440,000 increase, and I would like to know that those two full-time officers who are going to be hired would have some type of training in substance abuse, mental health, and, um, et cetera. Because if you would all notice that the Police Department is besieged by overdoses and mental health and alcoholism. So I would like to ask Chief Dunn if, for his new hires, he would have those people with training in those areas. Thank you.
Chief?
Good evening. Yeah, anybody that's hired would end up going to a 22-week police academy. Part of that police academy, uh, the training, particularly under now, under post, there is mental health and addiction. And, uh, we also take it a step further and work with Nami and a few others to train all our officers in mental health, first aid.
So that the new officers who are being hired will have training in those areas for calls?
Yes, they will.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion under the Police Department? Yep. Mrs. Smutter?
Back in the fall, we approved, uh, the Police Department coming out of civil service. Where do we stand with the state on that, on that process?
The petition is actually in the legislature, and the, um, Public Service Committee is pending a report that it's requiring from the town about how we're gonna do it in the future before they release the bill from the Joint Committee on Public Service.
Best estimate, another six months?
Uh, I hope by, I hope by April 11th, actually.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, down to my right over here. Microphone to the right.
Jason Cullinan, Precinct Six. Uh, I know that, uh, part of the capital expenses for the police are the cruisers on a regular basis. The choice of those cruisers, are those going forward in the future going to be electric or hybrid, given the, um, precarious nature we have as a peninsula and our efforts to promote environmental, um, leadership, as well as volatility of, uh, the global fuel market?
Chief?
Yes. Uh, probably for the last three years, all the SUVs you see driving are hybrids.
Okay. Yep, Mr. Smutter?
I just, uh, want to inquire if this is going to be coming up quickly in April, coming out of civil service? Has the Personnel Department and the Police Department been working together to get a process going for interviews and testing? And, that is my question. How far along, early in the process are we?
Yep, chief?
Working, working with all three unions in the department to come up with a program. Again, we're not gonna reinvent, we're looking at the towns that are already out of civil service as to how that process works. So yes, we are preparing for that.
Uh, just so I was clear, it's coming out of the committee by April 11th, if everything goes well here. Um, it still has to then be engrossed in the House and the Senate, be enacted in both branches. Uh, back left?
Rich Bradley, uh, Precinct Seven. How many of the hybrid cruisers are broken right now?
I happen to have three up at Wareham Ford.
And how long have they been broken?
I don't have the exact date. I can get it for you, but-
And do you drive a hybrid?
No.
Why is that?
Cause they were not available.
Okay. Yep. Let's go on. Anything else under the Police Department? Fire Department? Mr. Clark? Microphone down here to the right, please.
Mr. Monterey, Peter Clark, Precinct One. I support the three officers, the three additional personnel here. And the Fire Department is the place where the town has done the right thing in terms of personnel. I feel it's time for this town to pass an override in which other departments are given the personnel they need, such as the Conservation Committee, the Building Department, and others. I think we're piecemealing additional staff in as best we can. In meantime, lots of departments are understaffed and waiting and frustrated. Thank you.
Okay, consolidate it. Yep, to the left.
Bill Dunn in Precinct Five. A question on the Fire Department salary and wages. With the three new firefighters being hired, uh, and the $7.9 million, is that sufficient to cover with the new free, new station coming aboard, number one? Two, to give these firefighters some time off? Article 10, we're voting $550,000 in overtime, which is over $10,000 a week. I don't know when these guys go home, but, uh, I'd just like that to be addressed. Do we need more firefighters, or are there more in the system? And with the new firehouse coming aboard, uh, hopefully, uh, that'll be answered.
Who wants to address this? Fire Chief?
Good evening. Uh, Chief Smith, Precinct Six. You know, throughout discussions with the budget, these, uh, you know, the funds that were being provided will assist in the hiring of these three new individuals. As our staffing grows, we're hopeful that the overtime will continue to stabilize and come down a little bit. We are seeing, uh, that occurring. It's a very slow process, but we are seeing less overtime being used, and, uh, it is essential to try and, uh, avoid having mandated overtime, and we continue to manage and work, uh, with the town administration to try and, uh, ensure that our, our staffing, uh, continues to be addressed. And Selectmen have, uh, come up with a policy recently, and we're gonna continue to work together to try and address these issues.
Further discussion, Fire Department? Yep, Mr. Scher?
Look, Ed, with the ANC, Precinct Six. I was just wondering what happened to the $900,000 override we had, which goes on forever, or for hiring firemen? I don't see it now. It goes up two and a half percent each year. So you have, or someplace, $2 million that, or it comes in over what the budget should have for that purpose. And it's going, I mean, it's gonna continue year after year after year. Where does it go?
The override is incorporated into the Fire Department budget. So the first year, it was separate article, then it was incorporated into the budget. They hired eight new firefighters, they're on the payroll, they're getting paid, and then they will be incorporated and start a shift, I believe, in the next few weeks.
With the microphone, please.
Where is this million dollars going, and next year's million dollars going, and the following million?
It, it's in the Fire Department budget. The Fire Department was increased by the override, and then it's in there every year. It's in the Fire Department budget.
So the Fire Department really, the, mm-hmm, mm-hmm, budget dropped this year, because everybody else has got a slight increase, and theirs got, should have gotten a slight increase, plus the million dollars. I'm just showing where an override really doesn't work.
The override really is in the Fire Department budget. The override really is in the Fire Department budget.
Okay, further discussion on the Fire Department. Mr. Smutter?
Just want to inquire for an update on the search for a piece of property for a Northwest Fire Station.
Yeah, we're on the budget. We'll deal with that when we get there. Let's not be non-Germanian so we're not here for a week because we're going to have to do paper ballots later tonight. That's going to take forever. Anything else on the Fire Department operating budget? Consolidated Communications Department. Marine and Environmental Services Department. Under the Department of Public Works, Facilities Maintenance. Admin Engineering. Highway Division. Snow and Ice Control. Street Lighting. Vehicle Fuel. Bike Ways. Fleet Services. Waste Management Facility. Solid Waste Collection. DPW Waste Water. DPW Water. Renewable Energy. Yep, with the microphone, please.
Deborah Aggar, Precinct 9. In lieu of what the budget was last year, I'm just curious, why are we only asking $15,000 this year? Can someone explain?
Yes, thank you for the question. The Renewable Energy line item is to pay vestus for the maintenance of the wind turbines. So that's why it went down. As you know, we're out right now to bid to take down the wind turbines.
Okay, anything else on Renewable Energy? DPW Parks? Ms. Lichtenstein?
Yes, Ms. Lichtenstein, Precinct 8. I just want to put in a plug for the DPW. After all the storms we've had, these guys have been out taking out trees all over. I think they've earned every dollar we give them, and I think we owe a big hand of applause to our DPW for all the cleanup they've done.
Under Education, the School Department. Upper Cape Vocational School. Under Community Services, Senior Services. Veteran Services. Human Services. The Falmouth Public Library. Is there a hand on something? Yep, see if you could stand up. Yep, microphone back there.
John Nolan, Precinct 1. I just have a question on Human Services. Why are we still maintaining the same budget for mental health and substance abuse? I should think with what we're seeing the last year in this town, we should really be spending a lot more money in those two areas.
Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager. So we just received some good news with respect to a federal opioid litigation, class action litigation that the town is a part of, that will be providing a recurring funding source in the form of a grant. And so we, as I said, we just received that news, I believe it was last week, so we will have some additional resources. Those funds will, by law, be targeted toward mental health and substance use issues. So we do have a supplemental source of funding to address that issue.
Yep, Ms. Bregga.
But just to answer sort of a more general question, the way that those funds are distributed are through grants. And so those are grants that our Human Services gives out to other organizations that, you know, come through an RFP process to apply for grant funds. So we try to leverage those funds to organizations that are specifically targeted on those issues. So that is in our community directly spending money through our department on that, but, you know, particular program that we would run. These are programs run by other organizations targeting those issues, and those are grant funds. And we've done that for the last three or four years. It was a change in the way funds were distributed.
Recreation Department. Beach Department. Townwide Expenses, Retirement. Unemployment. Health Insurance. Life Insurance. Medicare Tax. Other Employee Benefits. Court Judgments. Town Insurance. Debt Service. Long-term Excluded Debt. Long-term Unexcluded Debt. Short-term Debt. Any further discussion on the budget? Mr. Hargreaves?
Thank you, sir. I just want to make a comment, Peter Hargreaves. I want to make a comment and thank Peter Clark for his comment about looking at staff and organization of the town. I guess it's true that a rising tide floats all boats, but trying to look past the exuberance of our prosperity here presently, I think I would like to remind you that this all doesn't happen by accident. If you look at our town administration and our financial leadership, even our local paper had some not faint praise for the performance of the town, the financial performance and the management of the town. And the thing I wanted to say was, three years ago or four years ago, our town administrator, our town manager brought before you a request to have a Community Development Director, which is about organization. So having the right organization from the professionals who know how to make it work is two-thirds. One-third is the people. If you're not organized properly to deliver, the people are not going to be as effective. So I would say, I'm really happy to hear the tone of people supporting the departments that are well-performing and adding to that. And I'm sure that our town administrator, with his professionalism, will have a strategic approach to getting a collaboration among our very capable department managers to say, what do we need and how, and how are we going to organize? Because that's equally important. So thanks for the time to say this, and thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, the motion will come on the main motion, the budget as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 6, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 6 as printed.
As printed, as recommended, this is to raise and appropriate $360,306 for the provisions of the firefighter contract. Who held that one? Mr. Neto?
Joe Neto, Precinct 9. I held this article so that we could get some information on the firefighter's contract in regards to staffing. If you go back to July 1st of 2020, that was the first day that the contract went into effect, where we had to have two men per vehicle when it left the station for safety purposes, which I'm sure we all support. But then we came into a nightmare of numbers. And I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that I mentioned before this that I met with the Fire Chief, and we went over these things last week. The problem with the contract that we signed for July 1st of 2020 is we didn't have enough staff. And because we didn't have enough staff, per se, and this is a very complicated, I spent hours on this, and it's very hard to understand the staffing of the Fire Department because you come up with the exact numbers, so many men per station, so many stations, and then you have to figure an attrition of sickness, disability. So if you need five, you probably have to hire eight, three extras, so to speak. And I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of the staffing. But the crux of the problem was in that contract, there was a 14. We used to be a 10-man minimum for years, and it became 14. And then you take whatever number it takes to keep the stations open, and there were four different shifts, A, B, C, D, and you multiply that by four, and that's the exact minimum, that if everybody showed up to work, we could keep the stations open. The only problem with that is, because there wasn't enough people and the 14 number was too small, with six at headquarters, four at East Falmouth, there's 10. Now you had two in Woods Hole and two in North Falmouth, and the West Falmouth Fire Station didn't have any firefighters inside of it. So the solution to that problem was to do a volunteer overtime. And some days it's staffed, some days it isn't. A year ago, a town meeting member asked how much it costs to staff the station in overtime, and we didn't have the figures. So I met with the chief, and very graciously, he provided the figures. For FY '21, for that year, it averages $17,000 a month, or $204,000 for overtime. I asked him to give me the first six months of this year that we're in, and we are averaging $33,000 a month for $198,000, that figure times six. So my question has to do with the new contract that we have in front of us, and we couldn't get the contract until the Board of Selectmen ratified the contract, and they do that under executive session. And then you have to wait for the minutes of the executive session to get published so it can be made public. So I'd like to ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen if, in this contract, that 14 minimum firefighters per shift has been raised. So through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, what's the number, Chairman Brown, in this contract that we're voting on tonight and that your Board of Selectmen have ratified?
I believe they're still at 14, Mr. Neto.
The same 14 that keeps the West Falmouth Fire Station closed? Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman?
That's my understanding.
How, how can we negotiate a contract that's going to put us...
Okay, Mr. Neto, I think Mr...
Can I finish?
He wanted to address that question as well.
Well, how are we going to ratify a contract that, number one, keeps the West Falmouth Station closed again, except on a volunteer basis? And we're spending an exorbitant amount of money on overtime and having a part-time fire station. I stood on this floor before and said I would never support the closing of the station, and I still stand that way. I don't know why. I'd like some explanation, excuse me, from the Board of Selectmen. And Mr. Brown, if you could expound on how we got this way. I'd like my answers, my questions to be answered by the elected officials that we vote for in this town. Mr. Brown, would you please explain why we're ratifying a contract that, again, keeps a station closed?
Mr. Neto, I did bring that up, and I asked to include that in the negotiated contract, but it was advised by staff that it was a little too late to be opening up a new request to go add into the negotiated contract, and that was the answer I received. Perhaps Mr. Johnson Staub could elaborate on the constraints?
Go ahead, and then Ms. Bregga.
Thank you, Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager. So we have a couple of different issues that Mr. Neto was raising. To begin with, I want to make sure that everyone's clear that the significance of the number in the union contract in terms of minimum staffing, that doesn't represent what the town or the Fire Department's goal is for staffing at the beginning of the shift. The only significance that the number in the union contract has is it provides the chief with the authority to mandate overtime. So it's a little confusing about how this union contract provision is going to reduce overtime. It's sort of the opposite, but more to the point. When the firefighters work 24-hour shifts, so when the chief is mandating overtime, that's not able to be filled with the available staffing for that shift, what we're talking about is a firefighter working 24 hours and then having to work another 10, 12, or 24 hours on top of that. So I think it's pretty readily apparent that that's not the ideal way to staff a Fire Department. The way to increase the staffing levels in the Fire Department to fully staff five stations as we have now, or in compliance with the Select Board's adopted policy, to ultimately staff six fire stations when the Hatchville Station comes online and before a new North and West Fire Station comes online. The way that you achieve that is by increasing the number of firefighters in the department in the budget. And then there's a time lag of about a year to fill that position and have those individuals fully trained and available for shift strength staffing, as it's called. So it is, it was not deemed the right time because we did not have sufficient staffing levels to routinely be able to hit that 16 firefighters at the start of shift to then have the companion union contract provision that authorizes the chief to mandate folks to work overtime if needed to fill 16. That day may come as we staff up and the Board, again, has adopted a policy. And actually, if I could ask for that, is it available? So the Select Board adopted a policy just, that actually should say March 28th, the Select Board adopted this staffing policy. And it acknowledges the development patterns have changed, population concentrations across geographic areas of town, recognizes improvements to fire and rescue department facilities and staffing are overdue. The Board anticipates a time when the town will operate six fire stations until a new station is built to serve North and West. And again, that presumes approval of funding for a Hatchville Station. And the Board directs staff to prioritize hiring sufficient staff to operate six stations. So that's your solution. If the concern is to staff the five existing stations we have now and ultimately staff six stations, we suggest the solution to that is to add additional firefighters. We have, in fact, thanks to this Board's generosity, added 20 firefighter positions since the year 2012. 20 additional firefighter positions since the year 2012, and the Board is committing to adding more so that we can staff six stations. Thank you.
Ms. Bregga?
Just, I think it's really important for us to just recognize that this, bless you, the idea of the contract number is a red herring. The contract number could say 20. If we don't have men and women to staff those positions, then it doesn't matter what that number is. The problem is, and Mr. Neto and many of you in here know, we have been chronically underfunding for many, many decades our fire and rescue. In the last few years, we have been trying to make that up. The override went a long way towards that. But it takes from the hiring process until someone is shift strength and they can be added to those numbers that the chief can pull from at start of shift, it takes about a year. You don't hire someone and they go to work the next day. That's not how this particular field works. So just like when someone, you know, on boards for the Police Department, there's academies, there are many steps before that individual is considered shift strength. So we, this body, and then the Town of Falmouth, took the huge step of voting an override to help build in to the deficit that we've had for a long time. We have also tried within the regular budgetary process to fill in until we have enough... Until we have enough people, shift strength at the start of shift to, for the chief to call on, we are going to have the problem, whether the contract says 16, you know, 22, 55, it doesn't matter. And we cannot, I hope people understand, that these are our personnel who we expect to show up when we have an emergency and respond with the very best level of skill and professionalism. If we are forcing individuals to work multiple overtime because we don't have enough folks, and we're sticking, you know, very black and white to this idea that we have to have this, meet this particular number every single start of shift, when we don't have enough, you know, baseline staff, firefighters are not going to stay here. This is an employees' market across the board. They're going to go to other communities. So we are balancing all of those pieces. So we're trying to make up for the fact that we have really been in a hole for a long time. So I, you know, this board has talked about this issue probably more than any other issue in the six years that I've had the privilege to be here, and it's an important one, because it really goes to the fundamental, you know, public safety discussions that we have. But the goal, and this board voted a very specific policy to say, we know there will be, if this, if town meeting votes, and the town goes forward with Hatchville, we will be operating a six-station model for a while. That means an enhanced number of individuals we are going to need in order to staff six stations until we're able to build a new Northwest Station at some point in time, and the board has committed to that. We cannot make firefighters appear. We can just keep building into a budget and keep prioritizing that we're going to hire more and more, and get those individuals so that the chief can have that shift strength. He can, if he has enough folks, he can have it start at 16, he can have it start at 18. That number is simply when he can mandate overtime. And anybody who's run a business knows, part of what you have to do is manage, you know, employees. You have to keep, you have to keep, you know, meet your goals of your business, but also keep your employees safe, happy, and healthy, or else they won't be your employees. So that's part of what this town is trying to do.
Okay, Senator back.
I have some other...
Mr. Neto, you actually spoke twice, four minutes the first time, and then you had your second two minutes, so... No, in the way back.
Thank you, sir. Michael Healan, I'm pretty sure Precinct Five. Thank you, Doug Brown, for speaking up at the meeting, and Mr. Neto, for tonight. I have a few questions, Mr. Moderator, if I could. The first question is, since 2020, we've hired 20 firefighters, paramedics. What is the net result 10 years later of those 20?
That was part of my presentation, Mr. Vera, that the chief has given me these figures.
I got you, Mr. Neto.
So you want to reiterate the number?
Yep, so since 2012, we just heard there was 20 new firefighters, paramedics, whatnot. It's been 10 years. What's the net number of those 20 through, you know, termination, retirement, transfer, et cetera?
Chief, do we know that number, or is it up here?
So I'm not sure I can, I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but what I would offer is that the main effect of the increase in staffing that we've had since 2012, as Mr. Neto alluded to earlier, is that we've gone from 10 firefighters at the start of shift as a minimum to 14. So we've had a tremendous benefit to the community in that, on a daily basis, there are more firefighters on duty spread throughout the entire town.
But if I could, Mr. Moderator, that wasn't my question. My question was, you said that you've added 20 firefighters in the last 10 years. How many firefighters have transferred, been terminated, quit, et cetera? Because it's not 20. I know people who've left. So what's the number? Then, I keep saying the net, and I don't know if you understand what net means, but that's...
So as with, you know, as with any large organization, and we're talking about 77 firefighters as of, well, 74 budgeted positions as of this moment, counting towards shift strength. So every year, there are some that retire or leave, and there are some that are hired. However, what we can tell you is that of the budgeted positions that are approved today, I believe, and the chief can speak up if I am mistaken, that all of them are filled. They're not all fully academy-trained and shift strength-ready. They have not completed their in-house training, but all of the budgeted positions as of today are filled, and I would ask Chief Smith if you could either confirm or correct me on that.
Chief?
Chief Smith, Precinct Six. It's correct. We are, we have 74 personnel, and currently, we have two that have been hired that are waiting to go to the academy, and we do have some that are unavailable for shift staffing due to injury, long-term injuries, or regular, non-duty-related injuries, military leave. So that brings our shift strength down. We have about, probably, seven to 10 that, right now, are unavailable to be part of the shift strength. But with regards to attrition, since 2020, we have filled these vacancies that were open as a result of a resignation, or a retirement, or termination. And so we've hired at least 19 personnel since that time, and that includes the eight override and the two added positions as of 1-1-21. So we've been very consistent with filling the positions that have been open as a result of attrition. We continue to do it. If I, if we get a positive, you know, well, I should say that we got a positive motion on the budget, and we continue to finalize things, then I would expect tomorrow, I'll start calling for a list to hire these three, these three personnel that you just gave permission to me to hire. So we're going to continue to do what we can to add to the staffing when it's made available, and we've done our due diligence to continue that. And I expect that we're going to have ups and downs each day, but we are managing the best we can with the resources we have, and I, my hat's off, and I send all my thanks to the fire personnel for helping with this, these instances where we've had these openings at the beginning of the day. It's been very difficult with the holdovers, but the firefighters have been stepping up and doing a hell of a job for the community, and I, you know, I can't thank them enough. And it is improving. Our holdovers are less. Our overtime, as Mr. Neto pointed out, has increased in West Falmouth, and that's as a result of the station being staffed with the voluntary overtime. So we are making strides in having more coverage in the West on a daily basis. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Healan?
And then, just a follow-up question. Mr. Johnson Staub just said it takes about a year to put a job out there to get a new firefighter. The override was passed, if I'm wrong, correct me, two years ago. So how many firefighters, in addition to our base level two years ago, have we added to the staff? Because that was the purpose of this body passing that article, and the town, you know, voting on it, was to get the staffing level up, so West Falmouth would stay open, not voluntary overtime, but actually staffed. Do we know that number?
I think I just heard it. Chief, you want to reiterate how many new firefighters you have?
I got to kind of have that said back to me. I didn't understand what he...
Since 2020, how many additional firefighters do we have?
Do we have?
Yeah.
So it's, we have eight in the override, and two additional positions that were provided, 1-1-21.
So 10 new positions, chief, and then that's 10 net, not 10 plus eight left?
That gives us a total of 74, as Mr. Staub...
That's the total, 74.
Yes.
All right, and then my last question, let you go. Are we doing anything to entice firefighters, paramedics, to come to town, or more importantly, to stay in this town, and not be trained, and then go somewhere else?
Yes, we're trying to push this article forward for the contract to be approved and funded.
Good point, chief. Okay.
Mr. Vera?
You've spoke twice. That's the rules. You can only speak twice on an article. You're on the Rules Committee, you know that. Okay, so the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And it shows that the ayes have it by a majority, and the meeting will stand in recess for 15 minutes.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy, knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@ana.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running, and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441.
The attorneys at Oppenheimer-Nicherson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist, offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At ANA Paving, we believe in providing customers quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. ANA Paving, 508-540-4944.
Kalfi Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Kalfi cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at kalfinesurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design, 508-540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly-added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. 508-548-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Simply Hearing, Audiology and Hearing Aid Center, 508-548-8123. SimplyHearing.net.
Grossy Septic Solutions, 508-548-7500.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, 508-539-3888.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, 508-868-0664.
Dalpe Excavation Incorporated, 508-548-9788. Info@dalpeexcavation.com.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum, friendsofnobbska.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass. Info@peopleforcats.org.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole, 508-627-4266.
The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org, 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions, 781-930-5000.
Wacoite Congregational Church, 508-548-5269.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery, 508-548-5288.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery, (508) 548-5288. M. Duffney Builders, (508) 540-3625. Danny's Barber Shop, (508) 548-6013. David Rogers Electric, (508) 274-2057. Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance, (1-800) 800-8990. Chapman Funerals and Cremations, (508) 540-4172. Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth, (508) 548-9107. Mahoney's Garden Center, (508) 548-4842. The Cape Cod Five, (508) 457-5252. Ed Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More, (508) 457-9454.
Okay, folks, we're going to need to re-establish the quorum. Would all town meeting members present please come forward? Town meeting members that I see in the back, please come forward so that we can re-establish a quorum. The clickers are still not working, so I need you in your seats. Town meeting members, if you want to be counted for the quorum, please come into the auditorium. Okay, all town meeting members, please rise for the establishment of the quorum and the tellers will return the count. Sorry about not having a snack at the break. We haven't done breaks with snacks for a couple of years and it just didn't work out tonight, but we'll fix that in the future. Okay, in the First Division... Okay, folks, folks, I have tellers that I need to hear. Thank you. First Division?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Third Division?
Fifty-five.
Second Division?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. By a counted vote of 167 members, we have a quorum and we're back in session. We are now going on to Article 10. Okay, so you're going to release the hold? Okay, so Article 10. Mr. Chairman for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 10 as recommended with the Scrivner correction.
Okay, remember the correction was that we were just fixing those line item numbers. Any further discussion on the main motion for Article 10? Hearing none, then the question will come on the main motion. As recommended with the Scrivener correction, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 13. Mr. Chairman for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 13 as recommended.
Article 13 as recommended. This is the sum of $10 million appropriated to pay the cost for the fire station on Sandwich Road and to authorize the respective borrowing.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask the architect and the building committee to come down. We were going to give a presentation.
Architect from out of town?
Yes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to allow the architect, who's not a resident of the town, to speak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Julian Susso, Falmouth Town Manager. And as I see Architect and other members of the building committee joining us here, this is, of course, the presentation on the Sandwich Road Fire Station. We have some team introductions which I'll go through very quickly. I know those are difficult to read. Our building committee members are Chris Simler and George Rogers there are co-chairs, Boyd DeMello, Patrick Callahan, Mark Fineran, Peggy Nickerson, Christian Valley, and John Elliott. Staff members, myself, Jennifer Muller, our finance director, Greg Endicott, our facilities manager. And in the Falmouth Fire Rescue Working Group, we had Fire Chief Tim Smith, of course, Boyd DeMello, Fire Inspector, Michael Mueller, firefighter, happens to be the president of our fire union, Scott Thrasher, Deputy Fire Chief, and Jerry Martin, our fire alarm supervisor. And then with the Vertex Companies, we have John Lemieux, Executive Vice President, Stephen Kirby, Project Executive, and that's our owner's project manager. And with Context Architecture, Jeff Shaw, Principal and President, and Ellen Light, Project Manager and Architect. That is our team that has brought this project forward to you this evening. And now I'll turn it over to our co-chairs, Chris Simler and George Rogers. Chris?
Thank you. Chris Simler, Precinct 1. We organized in July and it's been a fast-paced effort, but a very thorough development of our program. Town Manager just went through how we organized. One of the key things we did was a space needs study that Context was part of. This is where we did a deep dive into the needs of this future fire station based on the operations of the fire department. And part of that effort on this committee, which has been really a pleasure to serve with, we have half the people that are fire personnel, operations, knowledgeable. Then the other half are buildings, construction. So I think we brought the best of both worlds together for this building committee. We had a public information session, got a lot of great feedback. We presented some conceptual designs and budgets to the Board of Selectmen. We completed the schematic phase, we're about 10,857 square feet, and that was based on the study needs that Context did. Initially, this fire station will house one fire truck and one ambulance, but it's also, as the Chief will get to, we'll talk about what else can be stored there that the town needs for their equipment. We're looking at an overall project budget of 10.8, 800,000 is already committed, so we're seeking 10 million to construct this facility. And part of the things, as part of our job, is to understand like what the cost drivers are and how we can save some money because in this economy and the supply chain, things are really dicey. So in order to do that, we're looking at revising the apparatus bay doors. We have six needed doors. So there's an idea to do some roll-up doors and some folding doors, or do all roll-up doors and there's a cost savings. Masonry, we're looking at deleting it and using fiber cement siding at a lower cost, but it's still durable. Floor finishes, looking at deleting the epoxy and using a sealed concrete. Site work and landscaping, we're trying to be a minimalist without like granite curbing and really try to put the money into the building. And then we're also looking at potential square foot reduction between 500 square feet to 1,000 square feet. So those are our cost budget savers to ensure that we get to 10 million and under if authorized. So right now, I'd like to turn it over to
Thank you, Chris. So right, the budget, the construction costs are at 7.5 million. We're looking at, the list that Chris just went through, we're looking at doing some, conducting some value engineering to bring that down by about 625,000, which will change the amounts for the contingencies and the escalation. As you can tell, we do have contingencies and escalation in this budget. As you know, this is, you know, costs keep increasing. It's somewhat of a volatile market, so we're trying to keep up with that. We have soft costs, which includes the architect, project manager, furniture fixtures and equipment and things of that nature. And we do have a soft cost contingency. So the total costs, we will get around 10.77. And we had the 800,000 that's already been appropriated last year, and so we're looking at around 9.9 right now. Now, this, we're early on in the process, so this is something that's fluid. And the changes that we can make now is extremely helpful as we get through design development and construction documents. So we can make sure we'll get two cost estimates as we go along. And if they come in a little bit higher, we'll do a little bit more value engineering. And so this is a chart, and I apologize trying to spread this out and make this presentation a little bit more visible, but you can see the black line, the black bars are the existing debt. And so all these other little bars are our projects that we're looking at and how they may fit in the debt drop-off. So the 10 million fits in the town's debt drop-off. So the town, as you know, has a debt drop-off policy, which means that we want to pay around $10 million every year in excluded debt. And as we pay down the principal, the interest decreases and it creates this window. And then within that window, we can incorporate other projects, which would be our wastewater and the fire station. So here, as you can, just as I, as you look at the graph, some of the color codes, you have the T-Ticket School roof in there, which has already been authorized. We have the fire station. We have the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. We have the SOAR expansion in Bourne's Pond. We still haven't finished that, but that all fits in. You see a little bit of an increase in like two to three years out, and that's when the SOAR will be finished. But we do have some debt stabilization to kind of stabilize that debt. So this is within our financial plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Shaw, our architect, and he's going to walk you through the building and the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Shaw. I'm Principal at Context Architecture. So the slide you're seeing now is the project site. which means you probably can't see that little orange button. Oops. Orange square in there, but I trust you all have paid attention previously. It's 878 Sandwich Road. It's across from the church on the left and the fields towards the right there. We have done a lot of work already on this site. We've done a survey, geotechnical test pits and hydrant flow tests. So we know a lot of information about the site and about what's necessary to build here. The site is currently wooded, as you can see in the photos.
Is that any better back there? A little?
The site's currently wooded, as you can see in the photos here. The photos show the site and looking down the road along the edges of the site. As was alluded to before, we did a comprehensive space needs study, which basically means we looked at every single room that needs to go into this station. We interviewed the fire personnel about their current and future equipment and personnel needs in the station. And we looked at best practices for fire station design. And we put that together in a study that determined the overall square footage that would be required in this facility and what the different components that would have to go into it. It was a space-by-space look. We included things like the Massachusetts Building Code, NFPA, fire station health and safety requirements. And we looked particularly at the requirements for building stations that are healthy for firefighters. I think many people know that there's increased awareness of cancer in the fire department, firefighters. And part of our goal as designing good buildings is to make sure they have healthy spaces to keep the potential particulates out of those parts of the station. That's new as far as how architecture and fire stations are designed. And so it's new for stations over the last 10, 15 years. This is the proposed site plan as currently constituted. The building in the darker region there and the driveway around to the back of the station. There's bay doors in the back, as well as the main bay doors facing the street. Station was set back from the street so that it didn't really crowd the street in respect to the neighborhood across the street. We also paid a lot of attention to exactly where the station was sited to minimize headlights coming out of the station. And what you can't quite see on this rendering is the solar panels. They're planned for PV or solar panels on the roof as part of this project, as well as a small parking lot for visitors and the public. Floor plan here. The apparatus bays on the right, three bays. You can see the trucks laid out there for both current and future apparatus, to make sure that this station is good for the future. We've also planned-
Okay, excuse me, sir. We have a 10-minute opening presentation, so I just need to know how much longer you need so that we can get the vote.
Just maybe a minute.
Is there any follow-up after him, or just? Three minutes? Okay, there's a motion for an additional three minutes to finish the opening presentation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Go ahead.
All right. So in addition to the apparatus room, there's fire storage spaces and the decontamination space, which is in the very middle of the station. There's actually three different spaces associated with decontamination. And then the bedrooms and living quarters off to the left. And then the public entry is towards the bottom of the page there with a couple of offices for staff reporting. And then the wellness space or the gym in the back of the station. There's a couple of renderings that we've done, artist renderings showing the station from both sides as you approach it. This is the apparatus side. The building has some masonry, as was alluded to before, that's currently in the design that could potentially come out and be all fiber cement. And then from the other side, showing more of the living quarter side of the building. Public entry here has less masonry, more collaborative-style siding. As I said, we've done a lot of work already, but there's much to do, including completing the design for sustainable aspects of the project and going through all of the mechanical systems, plumbing systems, engineering, as well as the remainder of the design phases.
Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I do want to take a moment to thank the very distinguished group that we're privileged to have serving on the Sandwich Road Fire Station Building Committee. They bring a wealth of experience in construction, design, management, procurement, which has served us well. We very appreciate, much appreciate that service, working with all of us collaboratively.
Okay, sorry about that. I thought I had three minutes. All right. Discussion open on Article Thirteen.
Steve Rafferty, Precinct Two, fairly simple question, great presentation. When do you anticipate starting construction? When do you anticipate this station being available to put into service?
Steve Kirby with Vertex. We, as Jeff alluded, we're early in the design process. We have to go to design development, construction documents, and then bidding, which right now the plan is to get this project out to bid in the mid to late fall so that we can start the beginning of next year. And we are putting about 10 to 11-month construction duration on the project.
Okay, for the discussion? Microphone to the left, please. Oh, up front, okay, yep.
Paul Sellers, Precinct Six. I have a quick presentation here. Oh, excuse me. There we go. So the Hatchville Fire Station, Hatchville Fire. Hatchville does need a fire station. There's no arguing that. Everyone here, I would believe, is in support of it. But the current design of the approximately 11,000 square feet is a bit excessive by the estimation of a number of people that asked me to represent this tonight. And the estimated cost, it started out at 10.8 million. We're struggling now to get it down below 10 million dollars. The thing that I'm perplexed by is, it strikes me is when I'm going to buy a new vehicle, and I just want that sturdy minivan. And you walk into the dealership, and the first question they ask you is, "How much money do you have to spend?" And the next thing you know, you're rolling out of there in the Escalade with the flashy wheels and the nice lights and the nice paint job on there. So we really need to consider, what is the best thing we need to be doing? Should we be consuming all of the upcoming retiring debt? Is that the best thing that we should be doing for the town? And should we be trying to, you know, pay off our credit card and just refill it back up with more debt and not be really satisfied with the design? And is it adequate for our needs? 10.8 million, or the current down to just under 10 million, does include that decontamination area, which is much needed for the safety of our firefighters. No one's gonna argue about that. But the expansive, extra storage bays in this station, you'll see in the depiction that was shown, there are only two vehicles in that station at this time. And the station is only gonna house that one fire truck and that one ambulance at this point. And there's no plans for any additional equipment at this point. And it could be decades before that space is used up, unless we use it for storage for extra equipment, such as a boat. What we need to consider is a smaller design. The current proposal is most likely to exceed the debt drop-off schedule. And that was pointed out by one of our selectmen with the statement that "I hope we can find enough savings. If we can't, work within the 10 million, we may have to come back and ask for more money." This sounds like a Falmouth High School project. So an alternative proposal that was brought up was to actually consider, why don't we set a benchmark of $6 million for the starting point for the fire station? Design it to work within the future expansion, future needs of expansion. Design it so we can add on to it. If we need extra bays in the future, we'll add on then. Play, make sure we place that building and allow it on the site so you can allow for that type of expansion. Use the remainder of the drop-off for other things that we are in desperate need of. Fire apparatus. The West Falmouth Station, we keep augmenting with a used fire truck. There's other apparatus needs for the fire department. Certainly, there's stationary repairs at North Falmouth and West Falmouth that should be considered. And the police department, DPW, needs are also still out there. There's no reason why we should spend this 10 million dollars of expiring debt on this one fire station. We have to, again, bring up fire staffing. I know it's a great subject everyone likes to talk about. But currently, with a good day, we're at that 16th number per shift. Two of those individuals are usually volunteers for West Falmouth. But what does the future hold? If we are gonna be committed to the policy that the selectmen have presented to us to make sure we're gonna maintain those five stations and six stations when Hatchville comes on board, we're gonna be needing at least 20 firefighters. Actually, it'd probably be more than that, because that doesn't include, as Mr. Neto pointed out, the staff that we need for illness, vacations, and attrition. So fiscal year 2023, I believe the number is, we'll have 77 firefighters, which puts us at about 19 firefighters per shift. And hopefully, in January of 2024, when the Hatchville Station could go online, we're looking at more of a number of 22 to 24 firefighters to cover all of the stations. And I don't think we'll be prepared to cover all of those stations in the future. Another quote from one of our selectmen, and I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, but you get some great quotes. "I hope our new policy will allay fears that there is some secret plan to close West Falmouth. The only way that would happen is if there are not enough firefighters to man all the stations. A positive vote on this article will strain our firefighter resources and jeopardize other station staffing. We are not prepared at this point, and we do not have a complete plan, an outline for the future, for the Hatchville Station, our equipment needs, or staffing for all of Falmouth." So I would respectfully ask that you vote no on Article Thirteen this evening. Thank you.
Okay, the far back left? Mr. Lishon Senior on the list, Mr. Neto, you're on the list.
Carol Murphy, Precinct Nine. I wanted to ask, the placement of the new Hatchville Fire Station, will that reduce response times in that area by how much?
Chief?
Well, natural, excuse me, Chief Smith, Precinct Six. Naturally, if there's a station in that area, any calls that we receive in that district that we're gonna create for this station will obviously have reduced times. Right now, in order to serve that one particular area, apparatus or an ambulance responds from the North Falmouth section of town or the East Falmouth section of town. And it encompasses the Schumett Pine Crest, towards, you know, Joint Base Cape Cod, Sandwich Road, all in the, you know, the Crane area, and then some. So we're hopeful that obviously, you know, a station there is going to provide decreased response in that area.
But what, I'm sorry, what is the response time now for that particular area of Hatchville/Sandwich Road area from North Falmouth or East Falmouth?
I don't have those numbers. You know, I would say that, you know, whatever the distance is between, you know, the stations right now would dictate that response time. But obviously, if you're driving from the North Falmouth Station to the rec field or if you're coming from the East Falmouth Fire Station to the rec field, that'll be several minutes.
Thank you. And also, I wanted to ask, as far as the construction, has, the lumber costs have gone up triple by the time this station will be built? And I wanted to know if anybody's considered modular construction?
Yes, we did look at many different types of construction in order to propose the design for this facility. Actually, early on, we looked at prefabricated construction and modular. We spoke to certain companies that do this. As you may know or may not, because it's a public building in Massachusetts, there are certain requirements for how you procure buildings and components of buildings. If we were to go that approach, it does create some particular circumstances that don't make it as cost-effective as it does in the private sector. But the particular construction concerns regarding a fire station raise the seismic classification for the building. So that is something that has to be added into the mix. To make a long story short, ultimately, we found that there was no appreciable cost savings for the building of this size and complexity to be built in a modular construction. But we did look at it quite extensively at the beginning. It was part of the charge for our team.
And I wanted to ask you, built into that $10 million figure, is the cost now for the rise in lumber? I mean, when this starts, what's gonna, the cost is gonna escalate by how much?
We have cost escalation built into the cost estimating that was done by a professional third-party cost estimator and who's done just about every building we've done over the last 30, 40 years, including many stations by other architects that have done fire and police stations. A lot of public projects, they have an excellent track record. This is, by all measures, an unusual time in the construction industry. And I don't think there's a professional here who could predict where prices are going to go accurately. That being said, I think we have done a great job of protecting the town by putting in contingencies and escalators for construction cost as we've seen the market fluctuate over the last six months to a year and anticipate that that will continue to happen. It's across the board. It's not one particular sector for construction materials. You hear it every day, if you're paying attention to this, price increases going in. So this has been taken into account the best that I think anybody, any professional, could at this time.
Okay, next on my list, Mr. Neto.
John Neto, Precinct Nine, to the chairman of the committee. When the presentation was made, we heard that the needs of the firefighters, you know, were put forth and were met, and that's all great and good. But what about the needs of the community? I think I share the same concept of this fire station as what Mr. Sellers presented you with. And I have some facts that I'd like to give you. Is it Mr. Rogers who was the chairman? What was, what were your marching orders that the selectmen gave you?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Our marching orders were to, we were given a piece of land and we were given the task of designing the most sustainable, safely operated, that met the minimum operational needs of the fire department.
Were the needs of the community ever looked at? Were the population ever looked at? Were the areas ever looked at in response? But we already had the site, because we already bought the land. But what about the community needs?
What the community needs are us being serviced by this fire station so that we're providing the best building, the best situation, the safest environment for the firefighters to respond. That was our, you asked what our task was. That was our task.
I'd like to share a few figures. Did you ever look at how many houses that this station would serve? It's nice to mention safety. No one's gonna argue about that. In the town of Falmouth downtown, there are 4,100 houses with 7,300 people, which represents 22% of the population. In Woods Hole, we have 13 buildings with 2,800 people, eight percent, almost 9% of the population. North Falmouth has 2,600 houses with a population of 5,500 people, which represents 17%. In West Falmouth, there's 2,200 houses, 4,700 people, about 15%. In East Falmouth, the center of town, we have 6,500 homes with 11,000 people, 36% of your population in the town of Falmouth. So now let's look at this 10,000-square-foot station for $10 million. So now let's look at this 10,000 square foot station for $10 million, which was put together by a committee that began in July, and here it is April. I've served on many committees, school building needs committee for the village school, for the high school. We met for years, not months. I think you folks have met 10 times, is that correct? You've had 10 meetings? And here we have a plan. So my last figure that I'd like to give you, in the Hatchville, in the area that this station would serve, the 2,100 homes with 4,300 people, which represents 13% of the population. To justify a station of this size and this price, I don't think these figures can support it. It's always nice when you mention safety. It's always nice when you're planning for the future. Well, I got another question for you. Do you know how much protected land that there is in the town of Falmouth that no one can ever build a home on? Did you look at that? Okay. There's 8,600 acres in the town of Falmouth that are protected that you'll never put a house on. In the Hatchville Fire District, which this composes, 25 to 20% of that unbuildable land is in this area. So we're putting a fire station that is never going to need the growth rate. The biggest parcel, by the way, if you remember, would be the Crane Reservation. Hundreds of acres of land on 151, and it comes almost all the way down into Hatchville. The Crane is not just on 151. So before my four minutes are up, I can't support
Which they are.
A building of this, a building of this size with all the intent and purposes and safety that's built in. The town of Falmouth has, as Mr. Sellers says, and thank you very much, but consider that. Thank you.
Ms. Lichtenstein, and then Mr. Antonucci. Did you want to address some of the points?
I would like to, yeah, sure.
We're going to have addressing some of the questions that were. Yeah, well, you can get on the list for another two. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. George Rogers, co-chair of the committee. We're not going to dispute some of your numbers, okay? But I think the most important thing to realize by locating that station there gives the fire department and its staff more opportunity to serve the whole community. What I mean by that is, you have two firefighters in North Falmouth. They do one ambulance run. There's no one covering that end of town. That response time now for our firefighters and our staff takes longer to get there. By citing an ambulance in that area is going to cut that response time in half. Now, I'm not a firefighter in this community, but I spent a lifetime being a firefighter and a fire chief, okay? And I've never, ever seen a station anywhere that has been not fully with every piece of equipment we have. I've spoken to the chief and the committee members and the town firefighters. Every station we currently have is full to its capacity. We're trying to build capacity for that, for that, for our community, okay? To protect our citizens. We've heard, you know, that the building is too big for the area. I'm telling you, the building is going to be full with equipment that they need. Another engine, another ambulance, spare apparatus, trailers they have, decon trailers, brush equipment, boats. There's numerous equipment that's going to be in that station eventually. It gives him the ability to expand his staff. And if we, we talk about resiliency in West Falmouth, and North Falmouth stations are old. If we have a problem in one of those buildings, he has an opportunity to move staff around and equipment into those, into a space that's safe.
Ms. Lichtenstein? I'll put you back on the list, Joe, but we have speaking rules. This isn't just cross-examination. I'll put you back on the list and you'll give, yeah, you can speak again.
Leslie Lichtenstein, Precinct 8. When I first saw that, I said, wow, that's a big building. But then, two things occurred to me. One, Joe said we have a lot of unbuildable land in Hatchville. However, what we also have is practically the only left buildable land in Hatchville. We don't have a lot of buildable land in Woods Hole. We don't have a lot of buildable land in the rest of the town. What's going to build out is Hatchville. That's number one. Number two is climate change. We don't like to think about it, but the storms are getting worse. We're going to have wind. The water level is rising. The Maldives are a problem right now. We're going to be a problem later. I think having a larger fire station away from the coast is a very sound planning move. Main station downtown, what happens when we finally have that category five hurricane? What happens when the sea level rises and we have that category five hurricane? This isn't going to be too big, folks. Let's not think about now, let's think about the future. We need the space. I've never, we've had some brush fires in Hatchville. Luckily, we get the brush buster from Mashpee. It comes and puts it out. Mashpee's been very good to us in Hatchville. We need to do it for ourselves. We can't depend on Mashpee, folks. Please, Hatchville has waited a long time. This is not too big a station. It's, when you think about climate change and you think about sea level rise, it just may be where our main fire station is eventually. Think about that. Thank you very much.
Bob Antonucci, Precinct 6. The beauty of town meeting is that we can disagree and we can hear different opinions. And we've seen that tonight. So I'm going to give you my opinion. My opinion is that we definitely should endorse this fire station and vote for it tonight. The need has been demonstrated. We have a committee who has done an exemplary job studying the issue, looking at alternatives, coming up with the best possible plan they can present to us. We're the legislative body. We're not the administrative body and the executive body. The financing for this station has been demonstrated over and over again. Our town is fiscally sound due to the competency of the staff we have working for us. We can give confidence to the chief, to the fire station by voting this. Public safety is number one. We have a need that is number two. We want to build the station that is functional programmatically, that will protect our citizens. Four, we want the most qualified people administering and overseeing this construction, and that's been demonstrated tonight. I'm in a superintendent and a commissioner. I can tell you how many times we built facilities too small and we could kick ourselves. We always want to save the dollar to start. Five years down the road, we had a problem. So we have the opportunity tonight to take a stand, to make a difference, to show confidence in the committee, to support our town administration, support our citizens. Let's get this built, let's get it built sooner than later. Let's move it on and do it right. That's what we do as a legislative body. Give ourselves credit for the job we do because all of us in this room do a damn good job. Thank you.
Mr. Donahue? Microphone in the center, please. Microphone in the center, please. I'll add you to the list, yeah.
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. Let's do this right. We're going to do substandard doors in the firehouse. We're going to have the building is, instead of having a brick or the best built building that can possibly be made, we're going to do it halfway. This is like, you know, someone who wants to build a house in the fancy section of the town but can't afford it. It's stupid. There's a budget, that's an arbitrary budget to this building. Mr. Moderator, through you, I would like to know, how much would this firehouse cost if we go top shelf all the way? What's the number? Is it 11 million, 12 million, 20 million? Give me a number.
Yeah, well, we'd need specs on top shelf.
Well, we had it. They had this top shelf, and Jennifer just said.
That was 10.8 million, according to the presentation.
10.8 million. And we can do it right. So we're going to chisel $800,000 and then have to come back five years from now and put up new doors? Or we're going to have to re-side the thing because the cement is, what it is is stucco. The stucco siding is going to fall off? It's stupid. Let's go for the 10-8. To heck with the budget and do it right.
That's not usually what I hear from you. Go ahead, yeah. Ms. Petit? And just for the record, if you're going to build a fire station in Hatchville, let's not do stucco.
Right. No, that's not the case at all. It was discussed earlier about the debt drop off. The 10 million fits into our budget. It fits into the debt drop off. This has been planned for years. We plan our capital facilities out to 2046. We can, when the cost estimate came in a little higher than the 10 million, we had a discussion with our project manager and our architect and said, can we get this, you know, can we get this within the 10 million and be, you know, responsible and have a very good building, you know? And we do. So we're not doing it on the cheap. We're just cutting some things down. It's going to look great. We're not, you know, it's not the Taj Mahal by any stretch of the imagination. But we want to be somewhat conservative and we feel good that we can get a building for 10 million that's, it's going to be within our budget.
Mr. Neto? No, okay, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I just want to say that this is going to be the first station that we've built where we're actually taking care of our firefighters adequately. I don't know whether you've been listening to the news, but there's tremendous evidence that indicates that firefighters are coming down with cancer a lot earlier than the rest of the population in which they live. This is going to have a decontamination space within this station so that it can be properly decontaminated after they come back from a call. This will be the only station. If we're going to get around to actually being more responsible to our firefighters with this new information, I think we're going to want to put this into some of the other stations. What are we going to do with that staff and equipment then? Well, if we build a station, it has a little bit of reserve capacity, and my hat's off to Chief Rogers for pointing out that in fact, we are dynamically moving things around. And we need this space on occasion. If we're going to renovate or augment the facilities of one station, we're going to need a little capacity somewhere else. You know, we're really short-sighted. I want to point out one more thing, and that's that the inflationary cost on building facilities like that is huge. If we put this off or if we cut ourselves short and then have to build, you know, an auxiliary station later on, it's going to be far more expensive than going ahead and investing now for a little bit of capacity, which will help assure that we can meet the needs, the firefighting needs of this community, you know, for the next five years. And I don't think we can look at our horizon much further than that. Thank you.
Okay, microphone to the right over here? Yep. Microphone down here on the right. Mr. Baker?
Thank you. Hello, Bob Baker, Precinct 4. I have a small amount of experience, we're in another town, on being on building committees. The first involved a school where we had two costs and two plans, not that far apart. The town opted for the smaller plan. A few years later, we were adding portable classrooms at a lot more money than the larger plan would have done. I also was on a building committee of a fire station that housed one engine. We had to add six to eight feet to the back because the engine didn't fit in it. And we had to add a small addition for a pickup truck. It was money very poorly spent. A few years later, they said, this is nonsense and it doesn't work. And the town decided to build a new fire station to house what they really needed. But we wasted our money doing this six or eight feet in the back and the small side for the pickup truck. So that is my experience with that. I rarely have ever heard anybody say, you know, I wish I'd built that deck smaller. Or I wish when I put the addition on my house, I built it smaller. I know there must be somebody out there, but I've never heard anybody say that. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Barker, I'm getting ready to paint my deck and I wish it was a little smaller. Yeah, Mr. Diamond?
Build On, Precinct 5. Finance director mentioned earlier, just by chance, that new growth and taxes is $800,000 that we came into that we didn't know we were going to have. So there is some growth going on in the town. You talked about $10.8 million would give us a fire station with no cuts, top of the line, and our firefighters could live in comfort. So I think the money's there and there is growth in the town. So we can't afford it. I don't think we cannot afford not to do it right. So let's do it right the first time. I also was on a building committee in another town. I was on a fire building committee for a town with 12,000 people. We built a brand-new firehouse with 10 doors. They said, why do we need 10 doors? We only have four fire engines and an ambulance. We were looking down the road. Those doors are filled now with other equipment also. So it worked. And that was 20 years ago. Thank you.
Okay, we ready to, oh, go ahead.
Hi, Peggy Nickerson. I'm a Precinct 3 town meeting member. I'm also on the Sandwich Road Building Committee. I was also on the Senior Center Building Committee. And I remember people thinking we were building that building too big. And if you know today's Senior Center, it's busting at the seams. So we are not building a building for today. We're trying to build a building also to include the future. And believe me, I've gone through these plans and we're not in excess of really anything. If we cut out a bay, we're just going to kick ourselves with that later on. In regards to the potential for building in that area, from information I've received, there's a potential of 160 buildable lots. So there's still a considerable amount of building that could go on there. And the Senior Center came in under budget. I wanted to be on these committees and be a town meeting member because I didn't want things to happen like happened at the high school. And the Senior Center is a perfect example. And we have many of the people from the Senior Center Building Committee on this committee, and it's an excellent committee, and we're going to do everything to keep it under budget. So I hope you'll vote for this.
Okay, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Pint of the chairs, that the ayes have it by a two-thirds, and I so declare. Article 17. Sure, yeah, yeah.
I apologize for taking you away from the next article, but I wanted to take the time to thank my staff and my personnel for our endeavoring to bring the information together for the committee. The committee has done a hell of a job, the support from the town administration. And Bobby Antonucci hit the nail on the head by articulating the, you know, the charge of this town meeting. And I can't thank you enough for your confidence in us. We're going to continue to serve the community, all areas of the community. And I thank you, and, you know, I hope that you have a great rest of the evening. Thank you.
Okay, Article 17. Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the main motion. Article 17 as printed, and Mr. Hargraves had held this? Yep. Did we, do you want to make a presentation first? Or do we want to see if he just has a question or?
Well, I think that Alan Robinson, my place.
Okay, yeah, no, so let's have the opening presentation. You're going to make that amendment, right? You're going to make the amendment, right?
I'll, after the opening.
Okay, yeah, let's do it that way. We'll do the opening presentation. Mr. Hargraves actually has an amendment. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Alan Robinson, speaking, a member of, chair of the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, and really speaking for not just the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, but for the town administration and including the Department of Public Works. We're here to ask your positive vote for the article for the collection and recycling of waste materials as stated in the, in the article. There's seven elements to the article. It's authorization of the mandatory programs for recycling that are required by the state of Massachusetts. It's to give the Board of Health the authority to adopt and amend such rules and regulations, including implementing the mandatory program for recycling or composting. And the rules and regulations And the rules and regulations shall govern all aspects and shall govern and apply to owners and occupants of all properties, business, institutional and residential, and requirements for private haulers. Oh, and I forgot, it's late in the evening, and I forgot the slides. The rules and regulations shall determine the categories of waste materials to be segregated. The rules and regulations may include temporary suspension of waiver provisions for cause if the cases, if that case comes up. The rules and regulations require that the Board of Health hold a public hearing with sufficient notice when those rules are posted for that hearing. And any rule or regulation which requires the use of DPW facilities shall require the consent of the Select Board. In 2010 was the last time the rules and regulations for waste were updated with the Board of Health. 2018, you approved Article 28, which was proposed by the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, asking the Select Board to develop a comprehensive recycling bylaw with mandatory recycling and bundled services in compliance with Massachusetts waste bans. In 2021, at the request of the Town Manager, the Solid Waste Advisor Committee, and then working together with the Board of Health, we did an initial draft of updating the rules and regulations for solid waste and recycling, but we were advised that we needed to come back to Town Meeting to obtain your approval to allow the Board of Health to set those rules and regulations. Why is it needed? So that the authority to approve and update rules and regulations for solid waste is restored within the Board of Health, who will implement and enforce the rules. The Board of Health already regulates refuse collection and would've implemented updated rules and regulations in 2001, except for what Article 28 stated, that it needed to go back to Town Meeting. Many towns in Massachusetts, I think approximately about 150 towns in Massachusetts have passed similar rules and regulations through their Boards of Health. Why is it needed again? To finalize rules and regulations for solid waste and recycling needed to encourage and enable residents and businesses to conform to Massachusetts law. Recycling is mandatory per the Massachusetts waste bans. Statewide management of municipal programs is not feasible, so the state DEP encourages adoption of local rules and regulations to comply with the bans. Current bans include standard recyclables, yard waste, commercial organic matter from restaurants of a certain size, and food stores, and many other items. Waste bans change over time, so municipal rules must be able to evolve. To finalize rules and regulations that will make recycling available to all, there are businesses now, there are condominiums now that are not recycling. Cycling is the town policy, but it's not, it's available to us, but is not the rules and regulations, and we need those rules and regulations. So also to require private haulers to bundle pricing for solid waste and recycling services so that customers, commercial customers or institutional customers, don't have to pay extra to recycle. And I just, we just included this list of towns with mandatory recycling, there's about 150 towns in the state of Massachusetts. And with that, is the end of the presentation.
Okay, Mr. Hargraves?
So thanks for that, Alan. And just for context, I want you all to know that I have a great deal of respect for the leadership that Alan's provided to the Solid Waste Committee. In addition to all the other things that you may or may not know that he does around town, with the water fountains and the litter patrols and the activism and energy are part of the reason I'm standing up here. Because I'm totally on board with waste management and recycling and rules that cause these materials to end up in the right place to optimize their future role after they're considered waste. But my concern is that there's a lot in here that goes beyond the commercial, the recycling or composting of commercial food waste. And that is a state requirement, and it sits there nicely, and it's a mandate. But there's a lot of language in here, and so this, about composting and basically bringing it to the individual residential level. And I know that there's an infrastructure for waste management, and there are options, and there's an infrastructure for recycling, and there are options. My concern is that in our enthusiasm to do the right thing, we might embrace this idea of composting, and as Alan has explained to me, I think, I think you said that food waste is 30% of our solid waste. And so there's a huge opportunity, but there's no infrastructure to do it. And so to put the possibility of a regulation to come out as kind of an unfunded mandate from the Health Department is concerning. I support this article with the elimination, basically my amendment is the elimination of all the elements that remove, that mention composting and starting, and I don't think you want me to read the whole thing, but as an example, and I've given a copy to Mr. Moderator, but the Board of Health may adopt rules and regulations to implement a program for composting certain waste materials in the town. And then it goes on to basically state that, talk about the composting of food waste as though it were something that we have the possibility of doing today as a routine thing. And I know there have been proposals for composting businesses, and Mr. Cavosa was here trying to acquire some ability to do that work on some of his property, but it's just not a simple thing, and I don't know how we're gonna manage it. And I think we should walk instead of run into this, and I would welcome some presentation in the future of what is the process, and what are the means, and how are we gonna accomplish it safely without creating rodent harbages and odors and all the other things. So I guess that, I don't know how you want to handle the...
Sure, so we don't have a slide, because you handed us this.
I have no slide.
So you do have a slide?
I have no slide.
No, that's what I just said.
You are correct.
That's what I said. So we have the written highlights to drop the references to the composting throughout each time they appear within the main motion. So that's what the amendment is, is to remove all of the composting language from the main motion.
First, I have to express my appreciation to all the work and energy you do, too, Peter, and all the accomplishments that you've been a part of within this town. But flattery doesn't get you everywhere. I guess there's two elements, two components of composting, and you know what? We already have a composting facility. We have a yard waste and leaf compost facility on Blacksmith Shop Road. So there is a, in fact, the state has a ban, and one of the waste bans is on leaf waste, is not to be in our residential curbside trash pickup. It needs to be separated and disposed, disposed or managed in a proper way, such as at the Falmouth Leaf Compost Facility. So composting is actually a requirement of the state today, not for food, but for leaves. Second, one day, it's, as Peter said, and there was a county report that came out in the last month, that 30% of the residential curbside trash is food waste. And the state, you know, we're running out of landfill space, the incinerators, trash, the energy facilities are not growing. We need to find ways to manage that waste. Now, could the Board of Health at some point come up with rules and regulations for composting? Yes, probably after there's been a state mandate, but you're right, there's not the infrastructure to do that today, not just in Falmouth, but throughout the state of Massachusetts. But when that time comes, it's not gonna be snuck through, if that's the proper word. Certainly, there'll be capital requirements for it that would be coming, actually would come through town committees, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and to this, and to Town Meeting. There would be operational costs increased, probably, or they might at least be different ones, and they too would go through that same process. So I think it's important for the Board of Health to have the ability to consider it. And of course, part of the, part of the bylaw, as it's written, is to provide opportunities for public hearings. So it won't be snuck through. There'll be plenty of opportunities for the town leadership and the committees to be involved.
So my final remark is, you have bullet-pointed my concern, and I think we'll have adequate time to respond to the environment where it becomes mandatory, and then we can empower this regulation to also encompass composting. But this town has so many moving parts, we're growing and planning for so many different elements, and I just don't wanna stay up late another night worrying about going to the Board of Health meeting to see what the regulations are saying. So call me selfish, but I've laid my concerns to my colleagues here in front of you for you to do what you want with the amendment, and I think we're both in agreement that I have a, that the concern I have is something you recognize, and so it's just up to you, and I wanted to do what I thought was the responsible thing. So thanks for your time.
Okay, Ms. Bregga, do you wanna speak on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Just briefly. This is almost getting too civil, I'm getting a little bit afraid, but I would just say, I would, I understand some of the concerns, but I would ask that you vote down the amendment. And the reason is, you know, in addition to what Alan just stated, which I think are really practical, important points, that any expansion to include composting is gonna come with, you know, dollar signs that this body is going to weigh in on. The other piece is that we have an incredibly practical health agent, Board of Health. They are individuals, we've seen what they've done in the last couple of years during COVID. They work with businesses, they work with individuals, they are not looking to create additional work that they can't enforce because there isn't infrastructure there. They're incredibly user-friendly, community-oriented, so I don't have any concern that they're somehow going to rush to create, you know, rules that they, that can't be enforced because there is no infrastructure or facilities for folks to be able to comply with them. So I would ask that we vote down the amendment, and we move forward with the original article.
Okay, Mr. Goldstone, do you wanna do the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Put the microphone, I just had you on the list before there was an amendment.
So I would like to point out that in fact, there is infrastructure for composting, for residential composting. We have residential compost commercially picked up every week. There is a cost to it, but I would note that our trash then weighs almost nothing because it's mostly plastic. So in aggregate, it probably, it certainly saves the town because we pay for waste disposal by ton. So if the bulk of our, the mass of our trash is actually compost, and it is then composted and returned to us as, for the gardens, is what happens for us, it will in aggregate most likely save money for the town if there were a residential, a large residential compost pickup. But there is a commercial infrastructure, it's picked up, more than 200 people in town. And it's also in Woods Hole, Woods Hole Oceanographic, it uses the compost service. And I could give a plug for them, but I probably shouldn't.
Okay, let me go to Mr. Rafferty, and then I'll come back to Mr. Robinson. Mr. Rafferty?
Good evening. Steve Rafferty, Precinct 2. I've been on the Board of Health, I think, 10 years now, and as a member of the Board of Health, and I think I'm speaking for everybody on the Board of Health, we are one of the few boards that has the actual ability to just create regulations without coming before this august body. It's designed to protect public health. It's in state law. We take it very seriously. We were approached about the recycling and the composting concerns, and my, like other things that come before, is people like, well, you have the power to make regulations. You should do this. We worked with these folks, we talked to them about composting, we talked to them about recycling. I'm gonna be an advocate for voting down the amendment and then putting before this august body a fundamental question, which is, this article is, does this body trust the Board of Health to determine the best way to regulate recycles, composts, and other things? Or does this body want every regulation that might come before the Board of Health relative to this to come back to this body as a bylaw issue to debate and consider? So it's a kind of a concept issue, as the way it was written, because we don't currently have what I would call a strong vote from this body that we should develop regulations around composting and around recycling, which have to be done in a public hearing forum. And I will just say that, you know, we probably spent four or five of our meetings over the last year going over word by word what we would or would not adopt as ultimate regulations, but concluded that it was not going to be done by our board, it was going to be through the authority granted to us by this august body.
Okay, Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to, to thank Jed Goldstone for really bringing up something important and, you know, correcting me, in that yes, there is composting available, commercial compost is available in Falmouth. There isn't of the scale that if tomorrow, we decided that everyone was gonna have their compost collected, that's the infrastructure that's needed. It's great, you can do it, you can contract with it, or you can do it yourself, you can do it in your backyard. Actually, we encourage folks here and, you know, the folks in the entire community to start doing it themselves if they're not already. I know a number of people already are, because that is just a lot of benefits of doing it that way. But to do it on the scale of not just our town, but towns around the entire Commonwealth, a lot of infrastructure is needed, but I think it's gonna be coming fairly quickly. But there'll be plenty of time for deliberation before that time comes.
Okay, let's take a vote on the amendment. This is to remove the references to compost. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Pinned the chairs that the ayes have it by a majority. Any further discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Pinned the chairs, if the ayes have it by a majority.
Thank you.
Article 23, Mr. Chairman, just let us know what the recommendation is.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 23 as recommended, indefinite postponement.
Okay, so the Finance Committee's recommendation is indefinite postponement. Mr. Lowell, are you gonna place a positive motion on the floor?
No.
Okay, so once I take the motion for indefinite postponement, we go...
Well, well, then we go straight to a vote.
You don't get to speak if the main motion's IP.
I will make a positive motion, yes.
And then ask people to vote against it if you don't want us to go forward?
Sure.
Okay, so the main motion, sorry. The main motion is as printed? Mr. Lowell?
I move $1 for the purposes of Article 23, so we can debate it.
Appropriate the sum of $1 for the purpose of remediating erosion and providing safe trail access at Deep Pond.
Nick Lowell, Precinct 5. The reason I wanted to speak on this is my mother, who's the petitioner, asked me to. She couldn't be here tonight, and I'm sure she's watching, so I have to do it. The reason she wanted me to speak was to point out that she brought this petitioner's article because of the state of the Punch Bowl, AKA the Deep Pond, is in very rough shape from erosion. Basically, the pond is being loved to death. She wanted to bring it to the attention of the administration and to the Conservation Commission. I believe she has succeeded in that, in that they have voted that they will pursue this for a fall Town Meeting article to do some kind of erosion control plan and mitigation there. And she wanted you to know that, that it should be coming up again in the fall, and she was also hoping that any of you wanna spend a nice hour or so, take a walk in the Punch Bowl, if you haven't been there recently. It's still a wonderful place, but it is so heavily eroded that there's a big... it is so heavily eroded that there's a big safety concern there, and it just needs to be dealt with. So, vote against by $1, thank you very much.
You've all heard the main motion and the recommendation to vote against the $1. All those in favor of as printed for $1 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The noes have it by a majority. Article 24. The Select Board for the recommendation, and then we'll get a positive motion from the petitioner. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 24, indefinite postponement, as printed.
Okay, so the recommendation here, the Select Board, is indefinite postponement. Ms. Johnson, you're going to make a positive motion?
Positive motion.
Yep. As printed?
No.
Oh, okay.
Positive motion.
Yeah, do it in the mic so everybody can hear.
Yeah, okay. I didn't expect to be up tonight, it's a fast meeting. All right, I'm Patricia Johnson, and I live in Precinct Five, and I brought, I'm my own--
Just make, I need you to make a motion first, what's the motion going to be?
I make the motion that as, as printed.
As printed, the same language that's in the warrant?
Yes.
Okay, so the main motion is as printed, go ahead.
Yes. All right, I'm, I put this, I decided to petition for this because I think people should be aware that this type of thing is going to happen. We are going to have to deal with the gas equipment. They are very, very, when I first got involved in this, I was particularly focused on the noise, but in, in reality, the problem really is with the pollution. And if we're going to, climate change, we have to do things like change the way we do them. I agree with the recommendation by the selectmen that this needs more work. We need to have a dialogue in Falmouth, and we need to come back, I will make sure that we come back with more feed, more dialogue, more participation by people in Falmouth. But I do believe that we are going to go for electric leaf blowers, electric mowers, we have to, there's too much pollution with existing, it's, it's a health hazard. One, I have, there are lots of figures online, there's lots of information on leaf blowers online. Many towns in the state of Massachusetts are adopting regulations like mine, and I did make a slide, but it's not up there on the screen. Oh, it's up here, okay, up, all right. And my, the regulations that I proposed are quite similar to almost all the other regulations that towns have used in Massachusetts. One of the things that, as I said, is I find is the most serious thing is the pollution. And there are figures showing that one hour of gas-powered leaf blower is like driving a car 1,100 miles. So I will agree to indefinite postponement, and I want the selectmen to appoint a committee, and anybody here can join, and we will come back, I hope in the fall, with a more input, and maybe some things will be resolved. Okay? So I will accept indefinite postponement.
Okay, so after the presentation, the petitioner would like you to vote no on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Pinned in the chairs, if the ayes have it, by a majority. Now, oh, excuse me, the noes have it by a majority. She got what she wanted, is what I meant. Okay, so, so because of our electronic voting device issue, and we still have a number of articles, one of which actually requires a ballot, of which we were going to use that electronic system as the ballot, and that's a requirement of statute because of the municipal light plant. Because of that, by, subject to the call of the chair, I'm going to adjourn until tomorrow night, we're going to work through the day to try to get the ballot system to work, but we will have printed ballots tomorrow night, just in case the system doesn't work. So by call of the chair, we'll adjourn until 7 o'clock tomorrow night.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy, knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running, and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors. Francisco Tavares Incorporated is proud to be celebrating 70 years providing both residential and commercial landscaping. From landscape construction, maintenance, to site work for over 70 years, our professional crews deliver a full range of landscaping, masonry, and yard-enhancing programs. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, a family-run art gallery and real estate agency located on Main Street in Falmouth, focusing on local and regional fine art. Main Street Gallery and Real Estate, 774-763-5441. The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration. Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist, offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right. Hamilton Tree and Landscaping has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Located on Route 151, we're available for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority. At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products, supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
BSS Design has been providing civil engineering, land surveying, and permitting services throughout Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts since 1987. BSS Design, 508-540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913, with a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessories and gourmet foods. Our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Simply Hearing, Audiology and Hearing Aid Center, 508-548-8123.
Grassi Septic Solutions, 508-548-7500.
J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, 508-539-3888.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, 508-868-0664.
Dalpi Excavation Incorporated, 508-548-9788.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum, friendsofnobbska.org.
People for Cats, 44 Beagle Lane, T-Ticket, Mass.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank, in Falmouth and Woods Hole, 508-627-4266.
The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org, 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions, 781-930-5000.
Wacoit Congregational Church, 508-548-5269.
Soares Flower Garden Nursery, 508-548-5288.
M. Duffney Builders, 508-540-3625.
Danny's Barber Shop, 508-548-6013.
David Rogers Electric, 508-274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance, 1-800-800-8990.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations, 508-540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth, 508-548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center, 508-548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five, 508-457-5252.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More, 508-457-9454.
Additional support provided by Stop &amp; Shop Windfall.